Test, test one, two.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our commission meeting. Thank you for being here. Okay, City Clerk, call her role, please.
Commissioner Pembro.
Here.
Commissioner Bird.
Mike.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seikel.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordis.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
Thank you. Can we go to BH1, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Good evening. We're gathered together this evening under the provisions of Chapter 200 of the Florida statutes and in particular, Section 200.065, which is the TRIM compliance statute for which the city will be in compliance and is in compliance as we speak. This is a first public hearing on adopting a tentative budget and a proposed millage rate for the fiscal year 2023-2024 for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida. The purpose for the record is to recompute and to publicly announce the proposed operating millage rate of 5.7115, which is 9.73% above the rollback millage rate of 5.2052, and the debt service millage rate of 0.3410, that's 3410, as well as to amend and to adopt the tentative budget for general fund, utility fund, and all other funds of the City of Pembroke Pines, and invite the public to speak regarding the proposed millage and budget. For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to read Items Number 1 and 2 into the record. There'll be one public hearing, a separate vote on each for a matter of discussion. Item Number 1, for the record, is the first reading of the ordinance, Number 2023-10, which, for the record, reads as follows. This is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, establishing the operating millage rate of 5.7115, or $5.7115 for $1,000 of taxable assessed property value, which is 9.73% above the rollback rate of 5.2052 for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, pursuant to the 2023-2024 city budget. In accordance with Chapter 200 of the Florida statutes, as mentioned earlier, and establishing the debt service millage rate of 0.3410 for debt service on the general obligation bonds approved by the electorate, and providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The second item on the record, which will be considered for public hearing and separate vote, is the following budget ordinance, which follows the millage ordinance. It's a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance, Number 2023-11, on first reading. It is, for the record, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024, and adopting the five-year capital improvement program for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, in accordance with Section 5.08 of the City Charter of the City of Pembroke Pines, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and Commissioner, those will be items laid on the table for consideration, on the floor, if you will, for review. We invited the public to speak as required by the statute. And Items Number 1 and 2, both are charged with your decision, under the charter, to decide the millage, and the preliminary millage, and the preliminary budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion? Do I need a motion, or City Attorney?
You're going to hear from the public first?
Public.
Okay, but we don't want to put it on the table first?
Well, I've read them to the record, Mayor. They're on the table, they're on the floor, actually, for consideration. Thank you.
Public, anybody? Sorry about that. Need your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Scott Barnett, 19346 Southwest District. I come to you speaking for the Pines Budget Advisory Committee. First of all, I want you to know that the City Manager and everybody at the city, everything that we've reviewed over the past couple of years, great work. The people here do a great job, and this is a really, you know, really proud to be a part of a city like this. So thank you, everybody, for that opportunity. As we have essentially built out every bit of land in Pembroke Pines, we have finally reached a point of stasis, or equilibrium. This also means that we need to be very careful how we utilize the last remaining open spaces in terms of their strategic value to the city. Equilibrium also means that we are now at a point where any new development of residential properties requires the extra cost and addition of infrastructure and municipal services that do not actually bring any net revenue to the city at this point. Every year, as the millage rate is discussed, the members of this commission throw around arbitrary numbers with the intent to show the public that rates will not go up. In some ways, this represents a serious conflict of interest, as every member on this commission has an inherent personal interest to keep that rate low, while the City Manager, and we can't fault him for this, wants to grasp every extra percentage point he can get. This year, we are simply stealing from Peter to pay Paul, or by lowering the debt millage to give an increase to the operating millage in order to maintain the same aggregate rate of 6.05. But at some point, we are also eventually going to need to take on some debt in order to invest in the infrastructure for the modern city of the future. It also means that the City Manager, in the future, will need to really find ways to slim down the budget. This is a great reason to support a formal budget advisory committee with financial experts that can debate these issues properly. Here I am, asking you again, please consider making this a formal committee with a consensus by all the commissioners, and if this includes me stepping down from this current post, I will do so. The operating millage rate appears to have only an upward trend, which means in 20 years, we may be in real trouble. We are thankful to the manager and the commission's guidance through the recession of 2008, as well as the pandemic of 2020. We have the advantage of being one of the most desirable communities in all of Florida. While the growth of new residential additions may be coming to an end, it is indeed a great time to make new investments in our quality of life. As the new economic strategy report foretends, there are great opportunities to make the most of these remaining spaces into well-thought-out, mixed-use properties that engage a healthy lifestyle, as opposed to dropping down more buses with two-plus cars for every home. There do not, however, appear to be any efforts on the part of the city to entertain a viable mass transit plan or any traffic mitigation. My own commissioner has offered the idea of smaller bus loops for schoolchildren that do not meet the two-mile threshold, which is a start. And if we are interested in providing new forms of living spaces in legacy areas such as Pines Village, then we need to be more forward-thinking in our analysis of this transportation needs of all. Mayor Ordis, the greatest legacy you can leave the city is a clear path forward towards the future, and if you really believe in the goals of this new economic strategy, then I hope you can be open-minded to new creative solutions to meet the needs of the coming decades. This next decade should focus on quality of life here in Pembroke Pines, because if you cram more and more people into smaller and smaller areas, then none of us will enjoy living here. So let's get that balance right.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Appreciate it. Okay, I need to hear from Mark McKenzie. How are you, sir?
Great, how are you, sir?
You have three minutes. I need your name and address, please.
My name is Mark McKenzie. I live at 1108 Southwest 113th Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
First, I've been living here for six years, very happy to live in Pembroke Pines. It's a lovely community, and there's a lot of nice developments going on. I have one simple question. In one year, the value of my property, according to the notice you sent me, has gone up 23%, on which you're basing the taxes on my home. And I understand that properties over the last couple of years have gone up, but 23% in one year, I really need some kind of explanation to understand that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dodge, you'll tell them about 27%.
Yes, I will. Thank you, sir. Your property, if it went up 20%, we certainly could research that for you. Are you able to do that right now, Lisa? If you could give us your address, we could probably give you a direct answer, but the assessed values of homes is not done by the city, it's done by the property appraiser. And there's a number of reasons they do that. If you have Save Our Home, which is a...
Homestead.
I'm sorry. Would you have a homestead exemption on your property?
I do, sir.
Okay, so it should not increase more than 3%. So for you to say it went up 20%, we'll have to...
23, to be exact.
Okay, we'll have to look at what happened to your property. And Lisa, do you have a...
Yes, sir. Lisa Chung, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. We have your property here, sir. Your assessed Save Our Home value did only go up by 3%. So if you could show me, and we could probably meet with you with one of our staff to show exactly where the 23% is.
Sure.
But I do show that your value went up by only 3%.
So in other words, the taxable value went up 3%. The value that they assigned to your home may have gone up 23%, which is very possible, but the tax rate that you're being assessed on cannot only, only went up 3%. If you would like to meet with us, we'll go through that bill with you and show you that. And if there's something incorrect with your bill, we certainly can direct you as to who you can talk to to find out if there was an error on it.
Appreciate that. Should I do that? No, or sometime in the future.
Okay. Whatever you know.
If we have your phone number on the phone, Ms. Chung will give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
That's his phone number right there. All right. Further, could the manager make the presentation that's in the backup? If that'd be possible?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would you ask?
Mr. Mayor, you want me to proceed with the presentation?
Yeah, if nobody else is ready to speak. Anybody else want to speak on the budget? Okay, Mr. Dodge, now, go ahead.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have had these conversations before, and it's, the commission has had the benefit of it. It's also been televised, but I'll review briefly the different aspects of our agenda on the budget. We're going to talk about all the funds, because we're not just talking about the general fund, which is based on your municipal tax rate. We're talking about the highlights of the budget, the road and bridge highlights, and the utility fund. The all-funds overview, the total budget for all funds is $517.8 million. And if you look at the graphic that we have next to it, I realize it's kind of hard to see, but the first line is the general fund. The general fund normally is what we're talking about with the budget that establishes the tax rate. The revenues and expenditures are balanced. That amount is $252,688,386. That's more than half of it. The other major funds that we have is the debt service fund, on debt that we have is roughly $24 million. And the utility fund, which is an enterprise fund, that's $81 million. And then we have public insurance trust funds, the general pension funds, both for the general, police and fire, and other post-employment benefits. All of those funds that you see on the list here is what totals for our budget for the next fiscal year, the 517 plus 8 million. The general fund, the way it's broken out, of the 252,000, roughly $116,126,000, excuse me, $116 million, $126,000 is made up of taxes. Permits fees and licenses is 50 million. We have intergovernmental revenue of 23 million, charges for service, miscellaneous revenue that we receive. And the way it is expended is personnel services make up almost 60% of those costs, which is $146 million. Our operating expenses, which has to deal with the normal operating expenses you have for utilities, for electricity, for supplies, operations, is $93 million. And we have $9 million worth of capital expenditures. So as the City Attorney read, the millage rate of 5.7115 generates approximately $94.9 million in tax revenues, and that's about $8.2 million above the current year. And this rate is an increase of .0425 from the current operating millage rate of 5.6690. The debt service rate is 3410, which is lower than the current rate and will generate approximately $5.7 million for debt service payments. That's a constant. Those were bonds that the public voted on for a number of projects in the city, and that varies only because when property values increase, new properties come online, it reduces that amount. So what we are recommending this evening is a combined proposed rate of 6.0525, which is the same rate as we had last year. And it is an increase of about 9.11% over the prior year. The value for each mil generates 16.6 mil. So if you look at this graphic, the adopted rate in 2223 was 6.0525. We're proposing the same rate of 6.0525. What that means to the median-valued home in the city, which is about 62 cents, 63 cents a month as an increase, because we're keeping it constant, but because property values have gone up, it has generated additional dollars. If you look at the millage rate history since 1415, our aggregate amount has been for the first, from 15 to 17, it remained constant. It was reduced in 1718, again in 1819, 1920, 2021, 2122, and it's going down again to 6.05, in 23, 2223, the current fiscal year, it went down to 6.0525. We're recommending that it remain constant this year. So the history of the city's millage rate has not escalated. It has remained constant. The value to that is, as new properties have come online and increased in value, that's what provides the additional revenues that offset additional expenses, and that's in personnel services, and it's also in our operating costs.
Okay.
If, I'm sorry, the general fund highlights, if you look at values of homes, we have, I think, 2,600 homes in the city that do not pay one dime of tax. That's because of the value of their home, the Save Our Home value, and their additional homestead exemptions. So we vary from 2,611 homes that pay no tax, that make up 4.6% of the population, to the most expensive-valued, single-family home of 1.8 million, which is a very small percentage. We also have, and that'll be a hearing next week, on the residential fire assessment rate. We do an assessment on fire, which represents 100% of what the cost is to provide that service, and that cost continues, and it has continued to go up over the years due to the cost of equipment and operation. The increase from last year to this year is $21.79 for the year. What we have in our new budget for the next year is six new police officers, a background selection investigator, a police service aide one, and an additional code compliance officer. In the finance department, we needed to add one new payroll coordinator. We also have contractual services through a company that also provide employees to us. And in the technology department, we have an additional six new employees that are required or necessary to operate. Under Parks and Recreation, where it'll be opening, we envision next year, at the William Armstrong Green Park. When we open that facility, there'll be a need for a new recreation supervisor. We're also looking for two more park rangers that inspect all of our parks around the city to let us know if repairs are needed, if the parks are safe. And we're also adding one additional communication coordinator position. And in our early development center at our west campus, we're adding one early development center teacher. We have major capital items in the police department, which represents $3.3 million of the capital budget in fire rescue, $2.8 million of the capital budget. In technology department with fiber optics and replaces for safety of our information, $1.8 million. And in Parks and Recreation, we have another $1.3 million capital budget for the next year. The road and bridge fund is a balanced fund, and it stands at $8.4 million. The revenues that come to fund that particular budget is through gas taxes and some other state taxes, and the general fund does also subsidize that. And these are a list of some major projects included within that budget. The utility fund, as I mentioned, is an enterprise fund. That amount is $81.5 million. That budget is determined by rates. There is no rate increase in the utility budget for next year, other than what we have as our standard CPI increase that we do on an annual basis. And there's $13.6 million worth of capital items. One thing we are exploring and will bring back to the commission very shortly is looking at aggregating all of the capital projects for the next five years. Taking that amount of money, instead of funding it on an annual basis, doing an evaluation to see if it would be more beneficial to get them done sooner, and to do a bond issue for that. And instead of funding these capital costs on an annual basis, use that amount of money for debt service. The final hearings on the fire protection assessment that I mentioned is going to be Wednesday, September 13th, at 5:15 p.m. And the final budget hearing to adopt whatever the City Commission decides to move forward with is going to be September 20th at 6 p.m. If there's any other additional questions, Mayor, comments, let me know.
Very good, and you did a great job, and hootos to our finance department, the best in the whole state.
Hey, Mayor, I'd like to ask the City Manager just a few questions.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'd like to ask the City Manager a few questions about the...
City Manager, a couple of questions.
Mr. Dodge, thank you, and your staff, for steadfast work. You know, anyone can get lucky in a year, but when you look at the series of year after year after year after year of having consistency, this is the reason why City Pembroke Pines does not have the challenges that other cities around us do. However, Mr. Dodge, you did propose an increase this year. The commission took note of some of the things that you needed to cut. What they didn't see in the presentation are the things that you took off the table, so let me just be as quickly as I can on this. Have there been any cuts to police or fire services?
There have been in the area of capital, but not personnel services, and in the fire, there have been reduction in capital item. If there were any, on either budget, there may have been some minor tweaks and reductions in operating if we felt we could handle those.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. And I did speak with our fire chief and our police chief, and asked directly, are there anything that has been cut that is absolutely necessary? And I was assured that the items that were being requested for would certainly be something that they can look forward to in the following year's budget. So I want to make sure that our first responders are taken care of. Number two, based upon some of the personnel budgetary items, whether it be in-house or FCS, are we assured that everyone will be making a livable wage with this year's budget?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Do you anticipate any cost escalation from personnel, from our outside vendors, meaning that we've had to make some budget adjustments in the last several months for some things? But have these all been included in this year's budget so that there's not a need to have to come back or make any kind of changes to benefits, or retirement, or anything along those lines, to the best of your knowledge?
They have been included, however, I don't know mid-year if something unusual happens, and they come back to you for modification. I can't answer that right now.
Okay, my last question. There were some capital improvements within each district that were taken out of the budget, excuse me, that were taken out of the budget based upon the initial assessments, whether it be parks, some recreation, some other improvements. Can you address the items that you took off the table, and please address it by district?
I can't do that this evening, but I can provide you with a list prior to the second reading.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, further questions? All right, let's have a motion for item number one, please. First reading ordinance? Do I have a motion? City Attorney, we have to...
Mayor, I motion that we have a millage of 5.6690 and debt service millage of .3410.
So you're not going with the ordinance we have in place?
No, sir. I'm asking that we keep the millage and the, same as last year, and the debt service to what it's currently at right now, at .3410.
Point of clarification? Point of clarification? Did I hear you correct, Commissioner? You said 5.6690 for the regular millage and .3410 for a total of 6.0100?
That's correct.
Second. City Manager, what does that do to the budget if we accept that?
Commissioner, I'll reconfirm the calculation on that from the best of my ability. We would have to reduce the expenditure about $750,000. Bringing it back at second reading. And the only other question I would direct to the City Attorney is if this is set at first reading, and we advertise it can be changed before second reading.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to the manager?
Yes. Yes.
If the motion is carried that's offered by Commissioner Good and by Commissioner Castillo, the five-point-six-six-nine-zero and the zero-point-three-four-one-zero, uh, they would not, they could not be exceeded on the second and final public hearing.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay, um, City Manager Dodge, I want to ask you a question as definitely as I can. Did Commissioner Good discuss this, uh, proposal to you prior to tonight so we could actually have real data of what seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars you're going to wipe out?
Uh, I assume from the last meeting, uh, and the, that we had, that I just thought there was consensus of the six-point-five-two-five, which is the same rate as a prior year. So we have not returned to the expenditure budget to see where in fact we would, uh, uh, make recommendations for a cut of another seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may still have the floor-
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Dodge, uh, the advertised trim notice, uh, that everyone received in the mail, um, the motion that, uh, you put, that, that's on the agenda tonight was actually made by Commissioner Good, and it passed on the three to two for advertising purposes only. Now we have a reduction. Um, that's not good policy. It, it's, I'd like to know more of whose district this money's going to come from. I'd like to know what police officer's not going to get what equipment. I'd like to know what firefighter's not going to get what they need. Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And so, you know, blindsiding the city manager at a hearing is not good business, in my opinion. So, I certainly, just based on that, I can't support the motion tonight. Now, if the manager comes back at second reading, Commissioner Good, with a seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar reduction, that makes fiscal sense, that makes common sense, that our residents can agree to fine. But, as the city ma, as the city attorney just said, if we approve what was just put on the table tonight, we cannot go up, which means that we're going to take our legs out, not knowing what police officer's not going to have what they need. So for that reason, I cannot support the motion being proposed.
Okay, Commissioner Castillo, you have a question?
Thank you very much. Uh, we need not cut anything. We can fund it out of, uh, reserves. We have other options that, although it could be that, that there is a cut that makes sense. Uh, let me tell you what doesn't make sense. Uh, what doesn't make sense is, uh, the millage rate for the debt service went down because they paid for it. This was debt, the city's debt, their debt. They paid it, so it went down. So the notion that we would try to spin off an increase in the millage rate, uh, to, to, to the extent that they had already paid it down and, and call it even, that's not exactly right. Folks, we are in the middle of a home property insurance crisis. We have, we have people living on fixed incomes in condos who are being asked for two-hundred dollars a month more, and this commission is powerless to do anything about it. I, we're powerless. It's not our issue. It's a state matter. It won't get resolved there. This is just not a time for tax increase. And so, I've been saying this for a while now, and what we need to do is we need to figure out how to make it easier for them, not the other way around. And we have very capable, very smart people, and I'm not going to get involved in, you know, uh, the sky is falling and all this other kind of stuff. We need to sit down and hammer it out, uh, for them, for their benefit. And so, this is, this is a great motion. It cuts us exactly even with where we were before, and it doesn't take away the debt that, that they already paid off. And so, uh, I'm all for it. And Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dodge?
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on. Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor.
The purpose of prime purpose reserves is for emergencies?
Uh, it's, uh, yes, and as well as, uh, if there was any major capital item that you wanted to use, because once you use these reserves, next year you're still going to be short the seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which will escalate. So, uh, you can't keep cutting it every single year.
Point of clarification? Commissioner Good, go ahead.
Point of clarification?
Commissioner Good, go ahead.
You don't want to hear a clarification?
Commissioner Good, go ahead. I'll get to you, Commissioner Castillo. What I get to you. I heard Commissioner Good first. Anyway, wait, any problem with that? No problem, right? Good, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, um, you know, I, I will respond to some of the comments made. So, yes, uh, I did make the motion, uh, for advertisement, recognizing that that was the maximum amount that could be set. Doesn't mean that I made that motion. That was my final decision, uh, knowing that-
Point of clarification? Hold on. Go ahead, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, following that meeting, I did do some additional research, you know? I mean, that's what we're supposed to do, right? Look at information that's available to us.
Right.
So, we have, interestingly enough, I'll point out very clearly, the difference is seven-hundred-and-five thousand or seven, we'll call it seven-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar difference. That's what this amount is equivalent to. That's what it says in this presentation book here. A little less than seven-fifty, but it's okay. So, I decided I will just take a look at a book that many of us probably don't take a look at. It's called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And if our finance director can explain what that is, then I can continue my conversation, so that way the public knows what is the CAFR, please.
Okay, point of clarification first from Commissioner Castillo?
From me or from?
Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you. Yes, the, uh, I know that the budget director is going to want to answer Commissioner Good's question, but, um, the, um, the uses of the, uh, of the reserve fund is whatever we say it is. And, um, um, we are in an emergency. There are people, there are people who, who, who are facing not being able to afford to live in their homes. This is not a time for a tax increase.
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz. What is the point of clarification, Mr.?
The point of clarification, um, Commissioner Good, it, it, you made the motion to advertise. I did not say that you made the motion to approve it. My question was, why didn't you speak to the manager about this research that you've done ahead of tonight's meeting? It would have been extremely helpful.
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer that question, please?
Commissioner Good, free pun.
Uh, because the budget is, is incumbent upon this commission to make that decision, and my discussion is with you, not with the city manager, in terms of what I believe that this budget or this millage should be. So if I can continue, I can explain a little bit more to you about why the decision that I made, uh, is what I proposed.
Mayor, if I could just change my point-
Commissioner Schwartz, wrap up.
Uh, City Manager?
City Manager?
Yes.
Are we a strong mayor form of government or a, or a city manager form of government?
The charter indicates you are a city manager commission form of government.
And does that mean that the city manager runs the day-to-day and all operations?
That's correct.
Does that mean elected officials get to act as a city manager whenever they like to?
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, meaning that if, if an elected official decided to be their own city manager, they can't, because we have a city manager form of government. The people elect us to consent with what you proposed. Is that correct?
Well, it's what I proposed, but it's ultimately the full commission that decides wh-what it is they wish to do with the adoption of a budget and setting rates.
So in our city charter, we have two provisions that, um, uh, city manager, that allows elected officials to work with city manager. One is three-oh-nine-A, and the other one is three-point-zero-nine-B. Three-oh-nine-A basically says that we can tell you whatever we want privately, and we can have that discussion about what we think about the way that you run the city. And three-oh-nine-B says that we won't interfere with you. So, by not speaking to you ahead of a budget meeting, how is that helpful to the-
Mr. Mayor, is this a point of clarification, or is this a conversation that is drifting away?
Gentlemen, can we move on?
Commissioner Seifel, do you want to speak?
I, I would think so.
Mr. Mayor, I have not yielded the floor, please.
I'm sorry?
I, I didn't yield the-
I thought you were done, Commissioner.
No, you-
Wrap it up, please.
I'm trying to explain why I am making this recommendation for this proposed, uh, millage rate, and I've asked the, um, finance director to, uh, please explain what the CAFR is to the public.
Lisa Chung, go ahead.
Lisa Chung, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. The C A F R is a complete set of financial statements that we publish as of a particular date, which is the end of the fiscal year, September thirtieth, that's been, um, in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, and has been audited by an external auditor.
So essentially, this is our books at the end of the year, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it tells us our expenses, our revenues, you know, our debt, you know, it's a balance sheet. So, when, when looking at the CAFR, what is, uh, what it stands out is, um, the discussion, when it talks about revenue as compared to what was budgeted and expenses as compared to the budget. So for year-ending twenty-twenty-two, which is not quite a year yet, there was a variance, a positive variance of nearly thirty-one million dollars, meaning we got more than we wanted, or we got more than we budgeted, and we spent less than we budgeted. In particular, when we come to expenditures on page fifteen of the CAFR, which has been officially provided to us, is that correct? Okay. And on page fifteen, it speaks to a twenty-four-point-six million dollars in twenty-twenty-two that was returned back to the general fund. And of course, it speaks to the different categories that it was returned to. General government services, culture and recreation, public safety, physical environment, and human services. Twenty-four million dollars went back to the budget in twenty-twenty-two. So that means we had a, a lot of extra money. We're only looking at seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars versus twenty-four million dollars that has been turned back to the budget. So I can't consciously, with this knowledge, approve anything higher than the five-point-six-six-nine-zero.
Okay, Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Lot of good information brought up, uh, brought up this evening, um, some good factual stuff. I, I, I just think that it's important that, that our residents also understand that, uh, we don't, and, and I, and I will speak, and I hope I'm, would be representing what my colleagues would be. We don't sit up here to try to find ways to spend money frivolously or on things that we don't truly need. Um, we're residents here, too. We, we bear the brunt of whatever happens up here. We pay the same taxes that you all do. We ask for the same services that you all ask for. It's, you know, our, our biggest, I think, one of our, one of our biggest, uh, uh, tasks that we are given is providing safety to our residents. Health and safety is, is huge. And when we talk to you all, that's always been like number, number one issue for everyone is health and safety, my family, uh, you know, my, my possessions and, and that. So, while I'm, while I'm listening this evening, and I, and I, Commissioner Good, I, I, I thank you for the points that, that you bring up. Um, I, I am concerned, though, at voting on an item tonight that is not clear as to what this, and I know, I know when you compare twenty-four million to seven-hundred-and-fifty, it is a great big difference. But we're talking about seven-hundred-and-fifty as it pertains this evening to, to these numbers we're talking about. So, while I understand where you're, where you're coming from and what you're trying to present to us, when, when we voted on this budget previous, when we had discussions about this budget, and we, we, we talked about every single line item that was there, we had a very long discussion about that, and everything was put out there in front for us. My concern on, on this is not, maybe not that it's not a good, a, a good point that you're bringing up, but what doesn't happen for me is where, because I'm looking at, um, just for example, the Road and Bridge Fund highlights, if we're talking seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, one of the, one of the big items that was listed on this was four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars for the lining of storm drains, a hundred thousand dollars for various catch basin repairs. I think back at how many phone calls that I get from residents when we go through these storms that we have, and they flood, and they don't want their streets to flood. They don't want their properties to flood. So, so while we have these items that are listed here and the cost that's associated with them, which are items that our residents demand to have, they want their roads to, to drain and to be gone. There, there are so many other items that were listed in here, health and safety, um, police officers. We get, and I'll speak for myself on this one, I know how many conversations and how many phone calls that I get from communities saying, "I want more officers. I want to see more black and whites out on my street. I need them out there. I want to be able to see them. I want them to be out there." So, so if you're looking at, um, you know, adding, adding officers or not adding officers, that's a big concern for me. That's a big concern for me. So, what I'm asking is, I don't think I can support-
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. I'm sorry.
I quickly, Commissioner-
Vice Mayor, but I'm just saying that I did say that not to fund those, by the way. I do have the answer to that question.
Okay.
Well, that's good. Um, while, while I'm curious and listening to, to what's been brought up, I can't support this tonight, uh, as it was, as it was amended, um, because it doesn't, again, doesn't provide those answers. It doesn't tell us exactly what you're looking to cut. When we but, when we vote on a budget, we have line items, and we know exactly what we're voting on. This, we, we do not. We just know, reduce money. And I'm, listen, let me tell you, I'm not about, uh, not wanting to help and reduce cost to our, to our residents. I talk to them every day. I hear about the cost for their insurance, how it's gone up and, and, and how they're struggling to figure out how they're going to, how they're going to pay for it. Um, the cost of everything else has gone up for them. Just go to the grocery store, just go to the grocery store and see what a struggle folks are, are, are going through. And so, I'm very, very conscious of that. Um, but, so I can't, I can't support this tonight. I wish that I had had, um, ahead of time, a little more information on this that would have said, "I'm looking to propose this, and the, the amount that it is going to change is about whatever it was, seven-fifty, seven-six, whatever it was," that, that, that would have been information that would have been shared.
Commissioner Good, you had your say.
Well, I'd just like a point of clarification.
Please don't interrupt. Commissioner Seifel. Commissioner Seifel, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Um, just that, that, that may have made, may have made a decision for me easier if I knew exactly what would be proposed to be taken off the table, and then I could make up, you know, make up my mind on that. Right now, I'm looking at what was presented to us and what's in front of us tonight, and while I always want, you know, more officers, more things like that, for sure, I'm happy with what's on here tonight. And, um, you know, again, this whole debate about one thing went up and one thing went down, that's good. That's money management, folks. That's just how you manage your money. And we're not looking for the residents, we are not, increasing residents' cost. Their property values because of all of the things that we do in this city and what we provide. A safe city, fabulous schools, good roads that are taken care of, all of those things. That's why, folks, that your homestead rates go up, because you have a valuable piece of property that everybody wants to be a part of. We don't set that. That's set by the property appraiser. We only can set that millage rate, and, and again, you know, that's, that's, uh, that's our task. That's our task. And it's always, it's always difficult to try to find the least impact to residents' cost, but yet to still be able to live in this world today and provide what we are required, which I think is an elected, we are required to provide to you, which is health, safety, welfare, and to make sure that your quality of life, whether it's your personal life, your business life, whatever in this city, is the best that it can be. So, um, I, I can't support tonight. I would like to have maybe perhaps- So I, I can't support tonight, I would like to have maybe perhaps some more clarification between now and second reading, that may make somewhat of a difference. So that's what I would be asking for, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
First of all, we're discussing, and I don't have a second, so it's just an item that you put on.
No, you did have a second.
No, there was no second. No, he asked for a clarification on the numbers. Did you second it, Commissioner Castillo?
They did.
Okay. Commissioner Good, wrap it up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, as much as I would love to have been able to provide this information to my colleagues, Mr. Attorney, am I allowed to do that? Am I allowed to provide my colleagues' advance information about what I'm going to discuss at the meeting?
You are not legally obligated to do so. In fact, any discussion of any kind that relates to a vote to be foreseeably conducted on this dais must be conducted on this dais.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have a question on that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Seiple, real quick.
Yeah, very quick, very quick. I get the whole sunshine, I get all that where we can't do that, that's not even the point here. City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
There have been times that, that, for example, I come back from a Florida League of Cities meeting, and I have information to share that at some point could come for a vote in front of us at, at some point, it's possible, a, a, an issue or an idea that, that we get from there. I don't share that directly with my colleagues because I can't do that. I can share that with the city clerk and the city manager, correct? And that then can be, can be as a, as a public sharing.
Pass on there. The, the best answer is that, that information derived from third-party sources like the League of Cities and that which you would choose to share with the manager or what the, what the clerk is certainly doable and legally authorized by the city charter and by Chapter 286, which is the sunshine law, but neither the manager or the clerk can serve as a conduit for delivery of that information to the commission. That's your job, that's their job, and the, and the foreseeability issues what's yet to happen. But you can certainly have those conversations with the manager, which frankly are between you and the manager, and the manager or the clerk or your city attorney cannot share your disposition towards those items with your colleagues unless it's in a public forum.
But it's not, it's not mine, it's information from the Florida League.
Passing on information.
City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still not-
Commissioner Good?
I'm still not for this yet, so I've asked the, our Finance Director to call up the CAFR, 2022 CAFR, do you have that?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Commissioner?
I, I'm asking the Chief Financial Officer to help us out with the CAFR. So on page 12 of the CAFR, it speaks to the financial analysis of the city governmental funds, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Could you please tell us what was the increase in the fund balance in 2022 from 2021?
For all funds, there was an increase of $19.1 million. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So for all funds combined, which is all governmental funds, not just the general fund, there was an increase of $19.1 million.
Thank you. And so what does that make the total fund balance, fund balance meaning, it's like our bank, our reserves, right?
Correct.
Okay. So what was the total fund balance for 2022?
$147.4 million.
Mayor, if I may, I think clarification needs to mean that's not just the general fund, we're talking utilities.
We're, we're just getting to my point.
Okay, I just want to make sure that-
I got it, I got it, I got it, the next question will-
Okay.
-clear this out really good.
Wrap it up, please, Commissioner Good.
So again, what was that amount in fund balance?
Total fund balance, $147.4 million.
Okay. And of that $147 million, how much is available as unassigned, meaning at the city's discretion to use however it wants? What is that amount?
That amount is $51.7 million.
So we have 57, or excuse me, what, what was that? 50, $51.7 million available for us to use at our discretion. So if we use .7, which is $700,000, that still leaves us with $51 million available to use at our discretion. So my recommendation is the city manager can use 705, $706,000 out of the general fund discretionary accounts. Can balance the budget, and we could still get everything that's being proposed tonight.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
I tell you-
Mr. Mayor.
Manager?
Yes, I just have one other comment. Mr. Chung, when you talk about the $51 million, does, is that included any of the carryovers from one fiscal year to another? I thought from one year to the other, it does not, because we carried over $17 million.
This is unassigned.
Unassigned, okay, thank you.
Unassigned, free, ready to use.
All right.
So again, I, I encourage my colleagues to recognize that there, there is ample funding available in unassigned balance that we could apply to the budget and bring our millage, not raise it, just leave it at 5.6690, and save the raise of the millage at a time when we really, really need it.
All right, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Can we have this item read in again, please?
Mayor, Commissioner, just to be clear, you're voting on item number one, which is the millage rate under proposed ordinance number 2023-10, as read into the record with the percentages that are there. There was an amending motion made by Commissioner Good and seconded by Commissioner Castillo that reduced both the millage rate and the, the debt carry as well.
I have a question for City Manager.
Quickly.
City Manager?
Yes.
Yes.
How many workshop meetings have we had in the last six months?
City Manager, it was either two or three, I don't recall, Commissioner.
And at those meetings, there was a game plan for police headquarters, was it not?
Yes, there was.
And part of, and part of your, your presentation, and please correct the record if I'm incorrect, was that over a period of time, we would build up our reserves so that we could pay cash for the building. Was that one of your thoughts at the time during the workshop?
Yes.
So this CAFR increase, was it not a part of your presentation?
No, Commissioner, when Mr. Chung talked about the, the fund reserves, she's talking with that $51 million roughly, is unrestricted. We have restricted funds over the years that we've set aside toward the construction of a new police station.
Okay, so Commissioner Good is making a recommendation this evening, do you agree or disagree with the recommendation?
I have said in the past what I believe reserves should be reserved for, however, this is a commission decision, whatever the commission decides to do, then we will follow that direction.
All right, let's see what we're gonna do. I'm not, I'm not done, I'm not done, Mayor.
Commissioner-
I have a vote, I have a vote to take, and it's a vote that's gonna matter whether or not folks get-
Well, you're gonna hear it once you go.
Get, get a second reading based on the millage rate, so please give me that, that latitude.
All right.
Okay, this is what happens when you get blindsided.
Okay, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor, I object to the, to the roll call, I have, I have a question for the City Manager, I'm not done with my last question.
City Manager, did you answer his question?
I thought I answered the question, we may have more.
I have, I have follow-up, sir.
Okay.
Quickly, last question, we're gonna go for a roll call.
Mayor, is there a reason why there's such a, why there's, why there's this sense of, of, of getting this-
Because I have to do everything by the book, and when you have a commissioner-
But I do not-
Let me finish, you have a question.
Go ahead.
It said each commissioner will speak three times with five minutes each, that's what it says in Ruppets Rules. I try to run a meeting, this is a very important issue.
Right.
It came quick, it came out of someplace, you know, we weren't expecting it, I want to see where it's gonna go. So we need to go, we have another large agenda for that.
Well, you know what-
So finish up what you have to say.
The most important part of tonight's agenda is this item.
Okay.
Okay, because this is, is what happens if we don't get it right.
Okay.
If we don't get it right, then we deal with the issue for the next 12 months.
All right.
So City Manager, we have $700,000 that needs to come off the table, we have a motion, we have a second, clearly they're voting for it. So my question is, is what services are gonna be wiped out, what capital items will be wiped out? Because I didn't hear that from the commissioner. He found $705,000, didn't talk to you about it ahead of time, but offers nothing as far as where that money's gonna come from, he's putting it back on your desk. Why? Because you're the City Manager and you have to deal with the decisions that we made.
All right, all right. Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor.
So what is it that you're gonna take off, I'm not getting-
City Manager, answer the question, and then we're gonna call a roll.
Mr. Mayor. Point of clarification.
What are we taking off the-
I'd like to clarify something.
City Manager, answer the question, and then we're gonna call a roll.
It was my, my understanding of the recommendation is that there would be no further cuts, it would come from reserves.
All right, thank you. All right, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor, to be clear-
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I may, you're voting on the amendment as, as, as opposed.
We're voting on item number one.
As, as amended by the amending motion.
Right.
Can we have that motion read in, please?
Do you want me to read?
Yes, please.
Uh, City Clerk, read, read the motion, please.
A motion to change the millage rate to 5.6690 and the service, debt service millage rate to 0.1340.
No. Point, excuse me, excuse me.
Sorry.
City, City Attorney, was that correct?
The, the debt, the debt service is 0.33410.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, call a roll, City Clerk.
That is the motion, Mayor and Commissioner.
Call a roll, City Clerk.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I don't have enough information.
What is your vote? What is your vote on the item? You have to vote on the item?
I know I do, sir.
Well, vote on the item, let's go.
The Clerk can call another member of the commission.
What's that?
The Clerk can call another member of the commission.
Call a roll now, vote yes or no. Simple. All right, City Clerk, call, call another person, I just don't understand.
Vice Mayor Seiple?
No.
Mayor Woodis?
No.
Motion fail.
Okay. No, he didn't vote yet.
He didn't vote. Mr. Mayor, the Commissioner Schwartz has to vote as a matter of law on the item.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. All right, Commissioner Schwartz, vote.
No.
Okay, motion fails. All right, let's go on to item two, City-
Mr. Mayor, we need to vote on this item.
Amendment fails, we're now at a motion as originally read, all right? Call a roll on the original motion.
Who made that motion and seconded it?
No one.
It, it was read in.
Who made that motion and seconded it?
No one, it was not, it was not-
City Clerk, was it motion?
No, there was the motion.
Is there a motion and a second for item one? Is there a motion on item?
Motion.
Oh, Commissioner Seiple, motion, is there a second? I'll second it. City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Mayor Woodis?
Yes.
Com- Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Motion fail.
Mayor?
Okay, uh, Commissioner Castillo?
I'd like to renew the motion for 5.6690 and 0.3410 for a total millage of 6.0100.
City Clerk, City-
Second.
What's the method of this?
Second.
City Attorney, what's the method? Do we just keep going on with it, or what happened?
I may respond, Mayor, the, the answer is that one of the, one of the duties and obligations as a public official is under the city charter and state law is to adopt the budget, which includes a millage, which drives the budget, and a national final budget. Tonight is the preliminary or tentative millage, and tonight is the preliminary or tentative budget. There will be a, very may, 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 Mayor, there'll be a second and final public hearing as required by state statute in these chambers, at which there'll be a final decision on the final millage and the final budget.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say something as well, please.
Well, you, you, did you make that motion?
I seconded the motion, yes, sir.
Okay, quickly, and-
So I, I just want to highlight that this is, we're only voting on the millage, we're not voting on the actual budget, the actual budget will come afterwards. But again, you know, when we get to the budget, we can speak to the 705, $706,000 coming out of reserve if we approve this budget or this millage as it was proposed by Commissioner Castillo.
All right.
Mayor, may I ask a question of the-
Commissioner Seiple, quickly.
Yes, quickly. Uh, City Manager, in, in this, this money that, this unassigned money that we're talking about that can be used for whatever, have we used that money in the past to front money when we had hurricane cleanup? Have we, have we used that monies and then got our, whatever we were entitled to reimbursement from FEMA back? But didn't we, didn't we front out monies from that fund to do that?
Well, Vice Mayor, we've always fronted money for a quick cleanup for the community and relied upon the reimbursement from FEMA as to whenever we receive that money back.
Right, right, but we, we front, we had the money, and we fronted the money to, to get our roads cleaned and our water moved, everything that needed to happen for our residents.
Correct.
And, and how, how much, how much, how much have we spent on doing, you know, can you remember the last couple of times we've had to do it, how much we ended up spending on those total, total numbers?
Millions, I can't recall the exact dollar amount, it depended upon what the storm was.
But remember now, it was, it was storm, it was water, it was cleanup, it was, it was the debris, it was the trees, it was everything.
There were millions of dollars we had to front, and we had to provide the necessary reimbursement request from FEMA. It did sometimes take a few years, and sometimes they challenged us, and we didn't always receive 100% of the money back.
I, I get that, it was all with timing, in the first few days, you get a percentage and, and all that stuff. Had we have not had that money available, what would we have had to have done in order to hire crews and pay our folks and do all that to, to clean up these hurricanes that were tens of thousands of dollars by the time we finished doing that? What would we have had to have done?
Well, again, we were fortunate that we had the resources. I do know that some smaller cities had to take out a-
Well, that was my question.
A, a bridge loan.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Smaller cities didn't have it, I don't know what they had to do. We're a big city, fortunately, we had it sitting there unassigned that we could use it for that. What would we have done, had to have done, Mr. Dodge, if in fact we did not have that unassigned money sitting in, in an account that we could clean our roads and, and make our people safe out there?
We would have had to resort to the same, the same process of asking for a bridge loan from a bank.
Asking for?
A, a loan from the bank.
A loan from the bank, okay.
Until we received the reimbursement from FEMA.
Okay, but fortunate for us, we had the money there, and we were able to take care of our residents because we had it, and then to get reimbursed for it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I have, I have a question.
City Attorney, clarification. If we vote on an item and fails, how many times can that item be brought back for, in front of the commission if it fails?
Is that a question of me, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This, this is not a typical item where you're approving an ordinance to do a specific thing besides the budget, the budget is a, is a distinguishable item.
No, but what I'm asking, the item that we've just got, an item in the second on, is an item that failed, now how many times can you bring it up?
Until you adopt a preliminary or tentative millage, and until you adopt a preliminary and tentative budget.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Quickly, quickly, we're gonna take a-
This is of the City Manager, might help give clarity for some of the questions that was asked by Vice Mayor. Mr. City Manager, do we have any restricted funds for hurricane cleanup?
Yes, we do.
And what is the amount in the restricted funds?
It's $2 million.
So we have a $2 million reserve that's not included in the $51.7 million?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, call a roll, please.
How much were, how much were, how much were the costs for cleanup?
Once again, it depends on the storm. We did set up that fund in, in a restricted account of $2 million, but I'm sure that we far exceeded that, depend, once again, depending upon the storm, and we, we used unrestricted funds for that.
So we far exceeded the $2 million, but thankfully, we had the money sitting there.
I can't tell you which storm, but I know some of them, yes.
All right, call a roll, please, City Clerk.
On the item?
On the item, that's in front of us. It's in front of us.
Commissioner Castillo?
There's a motion in front of us.
Right.
Call the roll, please, on the motion.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
No.
Mayor Waddis?
No. All right, can we take a 10-minute recess?
Mayor, Mayor.
City, City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Take a five-minute recess?
That's a prerogative of the chair unless the, the body objects.
Sorry, sir, you're not ready to that.
Deborah. Deborah Rogers.
The mill.
All right, you gotta get.
Sir, what item? What item is this on?
I haven't seen that. Tonight, we're only a majority.
Majority.
It's a simple majority.
Yeah, great.
How much is it going to take? You need three votes to get to the next.
Somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent to maintain as a reserve.
Okay. Do you, do you find Mr. Manager a hardship if you take from the reserve seven hundred thousand dollars in order to balance the budget?
Not this year. I don't know what's gonna happen next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. We're in discussion. Call or roll, please.
May I please clarify again what's the notice?
City Clerk, call. Repeat the motion, please.
A motion for an operating millage of five point six six nine oh, debt service point zero three four one zero, and a total of six point zero one zero zero.
Okay. Everybody understand?
Uh, I, I believe we need to restate the total amount. I believe it was six point zero zero one zero.
For the record, it was six point zero one zero zero.
Okay.
Zero one zero zero.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cypher?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to item two, please. Item two, please.
For the record, Mayor Commission, the item before you is item number two, which is the budget driven by the millage rate. That's twenty twenty-three dash eleven. It's an ordinance on first reading. It is the tentative and/or the preliminary budget. Item number two on the floor for consideration with a motion.
So moved. Okay.
Thank you.
Second, second by Commissioner Cypher. Discussion. City Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cypher?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Wait, I'm, uh, I'm sorry. Looking at, is this is number one or number two?
Two, two.
Okay, yes, please. Thank you, yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mayor Commission, for the record, let the record reflect that the mayor and commission allowed for public hearing and public comment on both items, number one, the millage, and number two, on the budget. There were public speakers, and to the extent possible, were given the opportunity to be heard. The second and final reading on the budget will be, as described by the city manager, which is on September the twentieth, September twentieth, at six P M. In these chambers, the city administration is charged by virtue of both adopted millage and budget ordinances and first readings
Excuse me, excuse me, Senator.
to publish, as required by state statute, chapter two hundred of the Florida statutes, the notification for both items, as required by law, to conduct the final and final review of both the, of millage and the budget on September twenty, twenty twenty-three, at six P M. In these chambers.
Okay. I'm gonna adjourn the first budget, public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's go right into our regular meeting. Roll call for our regular meeting. City Clerk?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cypher?
I'm here.
Mayor Otis?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Gordon?
I'm here.
Can we please stand for our budget of region? Mr. Mealy, would you read us?
I believe we just The flag of the United States of America, and this is a flag for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Mr. Mealy. Okay, presentations. Let's, uh, I have a request that we bring up item fifteen out of order. If there's no objection, can we do that, please? Item fifteen, City Attorney.
Hold on, Mayor, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, may I read item fifteen out of sequence?
All right.
With your permission, Mayor? Hold on. For the record, item fifteen out of sequence but approved by the Mayor and Commission without objection. Its motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-six, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, naming and dedicating Northwest One Eighty-Fourth Avenue within the City of Pembroke Pines to Officer Charlie Herring Avenue. In accordance with section one hundred point zero two of the City of Pembroke Pines Code of Ordinances, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of this resolution to the, to Broward County and to the Florida Department of Transportation, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item fifteen down the floor.
All right, there's a motion, the second. Commissioner Schwartz, did you have a comment?
Uh, Police Chief Chimpano.
Sorry?
Just want to bring the chief up.
Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
Kip Chimpano, Police Chief.
Chief, um, you're speaking on behalf of the family this evening.
That's correct. So thank you for giving me a moment, and thank you for moving the item to the front. Um, you know, as you're well aware, I came to you a few weeks ago to ask for this consideration on behalf of the Pembroke Pines Police Department family, on behalf of Officer Charlie Herring's family, and honestly, on behalf of many residents of the City of Pembroke Pines. Um, as you know, he's the first officer that we've lost in the line of duty, and we are at about the seven-month mark of that. Very difficult time for the agency, very difficult time for the family. The family asked me to speak tonight. They have been brought, as you know, to so many events, so many, I don't wanna use the word appearances, but understand that there's been a lot they've been through. Um, knowing that this was gonna be a potentially long meeting, if the item was at the end, I asked them if they would like me to speak on their behalf, knowing that they, that if this item were to pass, that they would surely be at that dedication event. Um, you know, part of my job has been to try to work with them and shelter them a little bit from, you know, what for, what for the kids is always a reminder that dad's not here. So tonight, on their behalf, um, they're honored that you're considering this as an item. Um, it's never gonna bring dad back, but the fact of the matter is, uh, should you all vote for this, uh, the police department and the family will be eternally grateful for taking a moment to remember Charlie Herring. Uh, and with that, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, uh.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Cypher. I can't talk.
I know that we had a motion and a second, but I would really like to have, for the record, that the motion and the second was five oh from all of us being a, a
Absolutely.
a willing partner in moving forward with this.
Please have it done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all. All right. Let's go back to our
Mr. Mayor, need a vote, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Need a vote on the record, Mayor.
Oh, I thought we did that with, okay.
Clerk needs to call the roll.
Call or roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
The maker?
All of us.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, that's me, Sean.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Cypher? Mayor Otis?
Honored.
Motion passed.
And for the record, the permanent number for the public records and for the family is number thirty-eight, thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a presentation now. If I could get, uh, let me see, Dr. Monica Elliott to come up? Thank you for your patience. This is a proclamation from the City of Pembroke Pines for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines Commission is firmly committed to raising awareness about suicide prevention in the City of Pembroke Pines and in Broward County, and whereas the month of September is nationally recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and whereas more than forty-five thousand Americans die by suicide each year, in Florida, a person dies by suicide every two hours on average. Suicide in Florida is outnumbered anything, and whereas suicide is a national epidemic costing the lives of six thousand veterans each year, and is the leading cause of deaths for first responders. Firearms are the leading method of suicide in Florida and the most lethal method. Access to gun triples the risk of death. And whereas the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital Association, and the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry have declared a national emergency in child mental health, and whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for children, adolescents and young adults aged ten to twenty-four years, and whereas it is critical to recognize the signs of depression that may lead to thoughts of suicide, including speaking about wanting to die, feelings of isolation or hopelessness, increased use of drugs or alcohol, and severe mood swings, whereas it is critical to recognize the best methods to prevent suicide when a person is in crisis. Ask if the person is thinking of taking their life, keep them safe, and remove their access to lethal message, methods such as poisons, prescription drugs, and firearms. Get them professional help. In Florida, dial nine eight eight, or call the National Suicide Prevention Line, one eight hundred two seven three eight two five five, or text seven four one seven four one. And whereas the Legal Women Voters of Broward County have provided significant leadership in suicide prevention through community education and creation of their Lock It Up Gun Safety Program, and whereas the Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics has provided significant leadership in suicide prevention through community education and programming. Now therefore, I, Frank, yours, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of City of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the City Commission, hereby proclaiming the month of September twenty twenty-three as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and enthusiastically support the mission of Lock It Up, and the League of Women Voters of Broward County Gun Safety Committee, as well as the Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, by encouraging safe storage of firearms and removal of other lethal means to prevent suicides. I'm presenting this from the Commission with our authority.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna make a comment, if I could, that, uh, Mr. Sam, our Assistant Manager, brought that to us last week, and I took it and I went through every page of it, and it was excellent.
Okay. Some, on behalf of Legal Women Voters of Broward County and the Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, I'd like to thank the Commission for recognizing Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. We have calculated that there has been a ten percent decline in suicide in Broward County, and that compared to, I think all of you know that that's significant compared to what's happened in the rest of Florida and, and the U S. We really, really do wanna promote the use of gun locks. We're not taking guns away. We're simply asking people to lock up their gun. So if you would like to have a gun lock, I will have them, um, out in the lobby, uh, for you, but anyone who wants a free gun lock, these are absolutely free. You can have a gun lock mailed to your home by contacting Gloria Lewis with the Veterans Association. It's Gloria dot Lewis at V A dot gov. And again, I have some, uh, locks with me, and we also have these bumper stickers, and I want to read that to you. It's easier to childproof your gun than bulletproof your child. And I have those available also. So again, thank you very much, Mayor. And if I could get a photo, too? Thank you.
It was excellent. It shows what our city really is, and we thank you for presenting that.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, thank you very much. Also, thank you for, for, for your presentation. Um, I'm in government now almost thirty-eight years, either as a, as an elected official or as a, uh, as an executive in government. And I think the only thing sadder than a strategic plan on a shelf that collects dust is a strategic plan that isn't shared with residents and isn't, isn't looking for resident buy-in. So one of the things, Mayor, that I think would make sense is, is if we would all host a town hall meeting for a presentation on this economic development, um, and invite the residents to come in and see this presentation in a little bit more adept and to be able to ask questions. Some of the things that you've brought up are nothing short of visionary. I don't know whether the F A A would approve of six-story buildings that close to the airport. Uh, maybe they would. Uh, chances are, no. Uh, however, the fact that we're thinking out of the box, the fact that we're thinking about something iconic, the fact that we're thinking about something that brands Pembroke Pines in a very visual and livable way, is of tremendous interest to me, and I think would be of tremendous interest to the people in the city, particularly in those neighborhoods, and we have some. They're proud neighborhoods, they're good neighborhoods, but they need help in redevelopment. It, you know, every once in a while, you need to spruce up, and it's, it's that time to, to, to be thinking about those things. So I think this is great. Uh, I, I'm a strong believer in strategic planning only, for, for, for one reason, what my first boss told me. You count the things that matter, or the things that matter don't count. And so I'd love to see this brought down to more strategic goals. You know, I mean, in strategic planning, you've got, uh, strategic goals, you've got operational goals, you've got tactical goals, and you lay, and you lay out your oper, your, your, your operations, and you measure how well you go. 'Cause if you don't do
We appreciate it. We now have a presentation to the city. Present, let me see here.
Development Association?
Development Association. There, yeah. Good evening. Did you wanna just use the, okay, push, push that button there?
That is a good question. Um, we have some help projecting it.
The Clerk will put it on for you.
There you go. Thank you so much. Um, we love Pembroke Pines, and it has been our pleasure to, uh,
Ma'am, tell the record who you are, 'cause it won't know unless you tell us. I'm sorry. Thank you for the interruption.
Thank you. Uh, it's our pleasure to be here. I am Lynn Dellinger with Redevelopment Management Associates. Uh, this is my associate, Lorena Ledesma, and Lorena has been the project manager for this project here, and so we're very proud of what we've come up with for the city. Our plan remains centered, because this is an update, on the economic priorities and strong competitive position in the region. While maintaining the goals of the previous plan, this update is presented with an emphasis on providing recommendations with objectives and strategies to fit the current economic environment. So this plan will demonstrate the effectiveness of cross-objectives and how they can interplay with goals today. So the E D Department's mission is to utilize all available resources, especially information technology, to measure, plan, and guide the city's growth. So we're gonna help them achieve that mission by giving them a roadmap. The six goals that are strategic plan goals are familiar to you. They are position the city's image, the business climate, and its brand. To position the city for economic development, that just means get it ready. Make it welcome. We're gonna talk a little bit about developing product, land, and buildings, which you've already been doing and done it very successfully, and we're gonna talk about redevelopment throughout the city, how we can make that happen. We'll talk about infrastructure for balanced growth, and we'll, lastly, but most importantly, talk about the quality of life and quality places that are so important here in Pembroke Pine, Pines. So this, uh, plan is based on economic resiliency and sustainability. Buzzwords today, and as we've seen in this post-pandemic world and post-Great Recession, that we have to plan for the, for the growth, and we plan smart. So what does the data say? Well, we looked at the data, we did six months of research, we looked at every single corner of the city, we reviewed the transportation plan, we reviewed the parks and rec plan, your public arts plan. You, you have it all. But those are the cornerstones of economic development. So our, um, numbers today show us that we have a hundred and seventy-two thousand-plus people in the city, that your home values are in excess of three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and there are almost eight thousand businesses here. But what that does, what those demographics and socio-economic things tell us, is that you have a very strong business sector, and that there are medical and office infill opportunities, there's room for some hotel development, and that you're a very established, um, employment center. You're no longer just a bedroom community. So we, as part of our analysis, we looked at, uh, sixteen real estate transactions that the city, um, was orchestrated and actually took to sale, and we looked at the revenue from those, uh, sixteen transactions on the very front end. Some of them haven't even started, um, showing, um, a revenue stream, 'cause they've just come online, but you have almost seventeen million dollars in direct revenue to the city through, uh, taxes and fees. You have more than seventeen hundred and eighty-two new residential units within the city as a result of your aggressive real estate program. So, uh, we do work throughout the state of Florida, Georgia, and South Carolina, and you've got one of the best programs we have seen, so we commend you on that. Um, so we will move right now into goal one, which is the, um, first goal, to position the city's image, its brand, and the business climate. And Lorena is part of our marketing team, so she's gonna hit on some of those priorities. Good evening, Commissioners. Numerous initiatives have already laid the foundations and continue to position the city for economic growth. Expanding on this, Pembroke Pines becomes the premier storyteller to, uh, target audiences, using its platform to market the city as a competitive location, highlighting assets that are centered on, on health and wellness, making them destinations, hosting tours and events, especially at sites that, that offer future opportunity, driving messages home on print and digital media outlets, and partnerships with other agencies to advertise or promote resources on branded platforms. All of these will help, uh, current businesses and attract new ones.
Thank you, Lorena. So that's goal one, position the city. Now we're going to get them ready again. We're going to talk about creating some innovative partnerships. You already have a partnership with the Fort Lauderdale Alliance. You have a partnership with Enterprise Florida, with FDOT, with the Chamber. These are all the partnerships that we're talking about that are part of your program today. There are two important programs that we're bringing in that are new, a business retention and expansion program. We get a lot of state help if we can initiate that business retention and expansion program. It's been proven to be very successful for cities, especially cities your size, with limited room for growth. Also, as a result of the pandemic and the natural disasters, we'd like to have you consider a disaster recovery program for businesses. And again, the state has some programs that are available that we've made part of your plan that we brought to you tonight. The third goal that we'll talk about is develop product land and buildings. This is where you've done such a great job with the South Florida Distribution Center, with the former postal center, with City Center. I mean, it's just, we keep on doing it. We love your platinum permitting. We want you to actively assist signature project expansions. So we had a chance with your staff, who were so gracious and helpful when we were first on the ground, to meet a lot of your business owners and a lot of the stakeholders here. And so we know that they're interested in improving their properties. We think there's a lot of catalyst signature opportunities to develop product land and buildings in Pembroke Pines. Our fourth goal is to promote redevelopment throughout the city. Now, this image is obviously an interchange. But every property owner that touches a road has a stake in what's happening in redevelopment today. So what you're looking at as part of this land acquisition program is to prioritize sustainability and resiliency so that you can, when you do this planning, it's smart planning and it's smart growth. So one of the things that we were asked to do is look at some sites throughout the city, and we came up with five in your strategic plan, but I'm only going to talk about one tonight. Imagine when you came into Pembroke Pines on Pembroke Road, that there was this beautiful welcome signature feature, and it said, "Welcome to Pembroke Pines." So what we are showing you here is a artist's rendering, architect's rendering. It is to scale. It is to code. And so what we're showing on the south side of Pembroke Road are two residential buildings, six stories high, with some commercial and parking on the south side of Pembroke Road. And now we show a pedestrian bridge across Pembroke Road, connecting the properties across the street. You probably know that there's a Bravo supermarket there now, but if you'll look at the next images, we want to show you what this could look like. The upper left is a complex in Fort Lauderdale. It's up and it's doing well. Beautiful. You probably recognize the Publix right over there in Hollywood. It's right down the road. And it's a Publix with structured parking. It does quite well. The bottom left is that signature entrance pedestrian bridge, which provides connectivity and multimodal access for people to get from shopping to their neighborhoods and across. And on the bottom right, you'll see a linear water park feature, which would go at the base of the pedestrian bridge. And so what we're looking at today is different ways for water to be stored and retained. And so we look at linear ways to do it, rather than that big retention pond with a fountain shooting up from it. So that's just an idea of some things that you can do, and we have some more in your plan. Our last goal, not last, our next-to-last goal, is infrastructure for balanced growth. Cutting-edge telecommunications, infrastructure, and an ecosystem restoration program, those are big when it comes to talking to businesses about coming to Pembroke Pines and with talking to businesses for expansion. So by planning for solutions for these future uncertainties, you can prepare Pembroke Pines through your transportation plan and your parks and recreation plan. That transportation master plan is a very strong cornerstone for your economic development strategic plan. And last, I'll talk to you just a minute about improving the quality of life in quality places. You're already doing that. Like I said, we work all over the state and southeast, and this is a beautiful, happy community. It is already vibrant, safe, and healthy. We want you to brand it as a health-conscious city. You just adopted the suicide prevention award recognition. That's part of the health and wellness that Pembroke Pines is already famous for. So we're hoping that you may take that as an initiative to expand and broaden that reputation and implement this wellness and health initiative, doing that through expanding quality, affordable housing, the new Live Local Act. I think there are four pages in your strategic plan that talk about it because it's so important. It's important for your staff to know all about it, which they do. It's important for your developers to know about it, too, so that they can help bring the housing that Pembroke Pines needs to support the future. I thank you very much. We thank you again for the time and happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment, if I could, that Mr. Stam, our assistant manager, brought that to us last week, and I took it and I went through every page of it, and it was excellent.
Thank you.
It was excellent. It shows what our city really is, and we thank you for presenting that.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, thank you very much. Also, thank you for your presentation. I'm in government now almost 38 years, either as an elected official or as an executive in government. And I think the only thing sadder than a strategic plan on a shelf that collects dust is a strategic plan that isn't shared with residents and isn't looking for resident buy-in. So one of the things, Mayor, that I think would make sense is if we would all host a town hall meeting for a presentation on this economic development and invite the residents to come in and see this presentation in a little bit more adept and to be able to ask questions. Some of the things that you've brought up are nothing short of visionary. I don't know whether the FAA would approve of six-story buildings that close to the airport. Maybe they would. Chances are, no. However, the fact that we're thinking out of the box, the fact that we're thinking about something iconic, the fact that we're thinking about something that brands Pembroke Pines in a very visual and livable way, is of tremendous interest to me and I think would be of tremendous interest to the people in the city, particularly in those neighborhoods. And we have some. They're proud neighborhoods. They're good neighborhoods, but they need help in redevelopment. You know, every once in a while, you need to spruce up, and it's that time to be thinking about those things. So I think this is great. I'm a strong believer in strategic planning only for one reason, what my first boss told me. You count the things that matter, or the things that matter don't count. And so I'd love to see this brought down to more strategic goals. You know, I mean, in strategic planning, you've got strategic goals, you've got operational goals, you've got tactical goals, and you lay out your operations, and you measure how well you go. Because if you don't do that, then the plans do collect dust on the shelf. So I'd like to see this be interactive with our staff. I'd like to see this boiled down to specific objectives that have time and resource behind it. And if we do that, I think we will have ascribed the seriousness necessary in order to make the strategic plan work. So those are my thoughts. I want to thank you for your work. This is never easy stuff to do, and I think you did a great job. I still have some questions about it, but we'll handle those separately. I just hope that we can all agree that we should have a town hall meeting about this plan and invite the residents in. Maybe we could do it in the Great Hall. Let's invite them in and let's show them what this plan is about. Collect some thoughts from them. Maybe they can improve it. Maybe we can answer the questions.
All right.
But if we're going to be putting up buildings and that kind of thing, we're going to need their buy-in first because it's their city, not ours.
City manager, could you arrange a meeting, town hall meeting? I think it's a good idea.
Would you want the town hall meeting won for the entire city?
Yeah.
I think one for the whole city is a good idea.
All right, ladies.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Mr. Good, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to thank you. Obviously, a lot of work went into this and things. Commissioner Castillo actually made a comment, which is one of the things I was going through here, curious about, because we have 2014 that I think you all piggybacked off, I'm assuming, and built a better product for us. But in that transition, I didn't see any measurements. I didn't see what did we do from the 2014. Here's the plan in 2014. Here's 2023. Where was the measurements and how successful we were in dealing with our 2014? So, you know, goal measurements are certainly a huge value for me, but I do recognize that this is a sort of a living document, right? So it continues to evolve, I'm assuming.
It does.
So I don't know if you're the appropriate person to ask the question, but what's the frequency in which that we will start addressing the strategic plan? Last time we did it was 2014. We waited nine years. Do we do this on an annual basis?
It's usually on a three- to five-year basis, and that's what the window of this particular plan was based on.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Thank you, Mike.
Mike Stam is the city manager. Commissioner, what we have done with our Economic Development Board is we've gone through these strategies and the goals and use our Economic Development Board as the outlet, and when they present their annual plan, they kind of reserve how we've addressed these items. Collectively, in the 2014 plan, over a period of seven years, we delayed it because of COVID, we probably accomplished about 70% of the goals inside there. In terms of the real estate transactions and proposals, we hit almost every one of them. The one I know Mr. Dodd tried really hard with, the Bell South building next to Pembroke Gardens, that little Bell South piece, we never were able to acquire it. We tried to get them to work on that many times, but we hit most of those goals. But we've used our Economic Development Board as a measure. Ms. White is still here. She knows every year. She works on the budget. There's a section in our budget that discusses the economic development strategic plan, so we hit it on that front also. We would have done this sooner had COVID not hit. We delayed it. We thought the data would be kind of flawed because COVID really shook up some of the data sets. That's why we waited till we went in.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I still have questions, just comments. So meaningly, every three years, maybe there is an update to the strategy, the strategic plan, right? Because, you know, if we are going to do town hall, we are inviting the public to speak, I'm certain that we are going to hear some things that maybe were not introduced in the process that you've gone through. I mean, I immediately picked up on one thing in particular. I see that we are encouraged to implement the Parks and Recreation Plan, which has not even yet been the master plan, which hasn't even been presented to us yet, but yet nothing about the Transportation Master Plan, which has been presented to us. And I think transportation is a fundamental pillar in the economic development because if people ain't happy when they're driving, they don't want to be here. But thank you again. Wonderful work, and I look forward to more in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Mayor, real quick before, on the agenda item, there's a resolution where we adopt the plan. We created an economic development section in our code. We adopted the previous plan in 2014 by resolution, and there's a resolution 2023- R-37 later in the agenda for adoption.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. It was certainly enjoyable to read it over the weekend, and having one extra day was certainly helpful. Mr. Stam and I worked together on the Economic Development Board. I was the chair of that board, and the 2014 was a result of that collective work. Finally, we have an update, which is certainly exciting. We did have some growth challenges. We did have some obstacles in the way when it came for grant programs for, let's just say, distressed shopping centers with legacy landlords who choose not to participate in the economic growth and improvement of the neighborhood. Okay? In a delightful way, this one's going to be tough. Okay? The proposal of the six stories isn't going to be an issue in that particular corner based on the instrument approaches, but economic development certainly is something that folks like to go within five miles of their home, right? The eastern side of the city, Commissioner Good and I work extremely hard in getting newness and freshness to it, but we need participants. We need folks who certainly need to step it up a little bit. Mr. Stam's department, finally, Mayor. The jack-of-all-trades, the... If it wasn't for Mr. Stam's planning department, Economic Development Department, I would say the city can't function. Between the building department responsibilities, trying to get through code, trying to appease both business owners and residents with treaties, environmental boards, and certainly kudos for this collaborative work. I know you go to many cities around the country. You won't find a better city than the city of Pembroke Pines. And so congratulations to you both. I'm looking forward to adopt the final plan.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say Commissioner Good jumped on a little bit before I did, but it was in my notes to talk to you about. You mentioned Parks and Rec, and then you also didn't really talk a little bit about transportation. But we have two of those programs that are ongoing now that we've been holding citywide forums on to get information from our residents on what they want to see in our parks and recreation. We hired a, what was his title, a traffic consulting engineer to actually help us work with our transportation program. And so, you know, a lot of good information in those, and I do hope that you all moving forward will listen to that and make that part of what you present, what you will eventually be a total presentation for us, because there's really good information in there. A lot about transportation, movement, busing, hubs, a lot of stuff that's in there for... So for us to be a forward-thinking city, we need to talk about those kinds of issues and how do we then help that into our business community that folks still want to come here and open up their shop and do business here. So thank you. I look forward to having more information and then to really see. But it's important that we do have benchmarks, that we have, you know, where we reach certain goals, that even if they're not the total goal yet, we'd still like to hear how far we're progressing on things and where we're moving along. So maybe some interim information would be helpful as well to us, or would be, you know, well accepted by us. So thank you.
Mayor, one last comment. And again, this is my fault, and I helped with give some guidance on their presentation. I didn't want them to focus a lot of things. I wanted them to kind of go briefly through. We knew we were going to have a busy agenda. Within different goals, there are certain highlights, and we try to go back to the Transportation Master Plan, for example. Goal five really talks about how we want to hit that. There was a little more focus on some of the quality of life items and the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Christina shared a lot of their executive summary and their survey documents to kind of get us rolling with that. A lot of that was the resident side. If you look in the back of the document, there's a couple of sections in there. There's a whole market analysis and also the business survey. So this was a combination of what we were hearing from the residents through these other master planning documents, but also what we heard from the business community. So keep reading, keep looking. It's a big document. We always try to give you enough time to go through it, but I think we hit some of them, and obviously, it's a living, breathing document that we can always make recommendations and changes to. So I just want to thank everybody for their time on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go. Now, some of the items to be pulled from the agenda. City clerk?
There are no items pulled, Mayor.
Items at the request of the public.
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
Scott Barnett.
All right, Scott, you're familiar with this. You get to say your name and address, and you get three minutes.
Scott Barnett, 19346 Southwest Fifth Street. This will be brief. One of my concerns over the past couple of weeks is the prominence of COVID coming back. I happened to have it a couple of weeks ago. I'm clear, I'm negative, which is a good thing, but we're seeing it coming back up again. One of the things that we had during the pandemic period was the ability to remotely interact with the commission during that time period because it was very hard for people to get here. I'm concerned that in recent times, the public comments email is no, I understand is no longer being monitored. And I understand you get a flood of a million emails of people saying everything every which way. It's kind of annoying to have to go through all of them. But, you know, I have a concern because a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Seifel could be commended for, she had a town hall about the incinerator issue. I wanted to be able to interact with that as well, but I was sick and I wasn't able to come. I was able to watch it, but I wasn't able to offer any of my commentary. Now, I could send an email to Commissioner Seifel, but if I want something read before the public in this forum, I'd like to have that ability. I think if we are going to be the city of the future in a modern city, I'd like the ability to either have public comments come back or somehow find a way where we can interact because I don't feel that the commissioners should have any privileges beyond what we have. And if the commissioners are out and they're able to, you know, dial in remotely and offer their opinions on everything, I think we should have a way to do that as well. So I would love for you guys to explore some way to bring that back so that we can communicate with the city in that way. Because the other thing is, there's people with disabilities out there that, you know, they can't physically make it to these meetings. How do they interact in these meetings if they can't do that? So thank you.
Mayor?
You can, any individual, any person from the city could come into our meeting, simply have to dial in through WebEx, and they're in.
Oh, so there is a...
Yeah.
Through WebEx? Anybody can do that?
Yeah, anybody.
No, no, no.
Unless I'm mistaken, city attorney?
No, we do not have that process set up.
Okay, so what...
Mayor, if I could?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What is the vehicle, then? I may have been mistaken. I'm sorry. That's what I used to do then. So tell me what a resident has to use to get into a city function.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, quickly, for the record, under the state statute governing sunshine and public records, the public has a right of access to come into this building or any other public building during a public meeting with free and unfettered access to be a member of the public and be at a public meeting. Not every public meeting is a public hearing for the purposes of conducting public business, as you know, and for the purposes of the COVID issues. That goes back to the governor's executive orders. That dealt more with the issue of the quorum issue for public officials. So the city does not, under state law currently, have any legal obligation to provide for, other than streaming access, which is a courtesy the city provides. The other points of reference are that the city has no legal obligation to present a forum in which someone would have the ability to comment, other than physically being present in the room. During COVID, there were some hybrid issues the city commission adopted because of the nature of that particular situation. And the governor gave you the authority to meet through a gallery, through a different means than you are now.
Point of clarification?
Hold on. Vice Mayor? Don't start, Scott.
No, I do. I've got time.
Officer? Good one, good one. That's a good one. I think we're kind of talking two different issues here. One is us as an elected being able to have access through a phone or through our computer if we are not able to be in a meeting, we're sick or out of the country or whatever. But what you're asking for is that John Q. Citizen would be able to have that same ability to phone in, computer in, but be able to have, like you do on Zooms, raise your hand and you get called upon to ask your question.
Actually, just to clarify, I'm just more interested in bringing back public comments email reviewed in this forum. That's all.
Well, public comment, if someone is sent, if an elected is sent, like an email that says whatever your opinion is on an item, and you ask that that please be read into the record, that's something that our clerk does read those into the record. If that's a request from the resident, that does happen.
I'm just wondering with the, like, for instance, with the American with Disabilities Act, if this, you know, somehow is a violation of that?
We're going to look into it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's... Next item, city clerk?
Ted Victor?
Ted Victor. How we doing? Well, it's good. I'm about to hear it.
Good evening.
You need to have your name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes. Mr. Victor?
I have my question.
No, it's, Button says, speak.
Right button above you.
There you go.
Is this it?
That's it.
Good evening, esteemed daisies, city officials of Pembroke Pines. My name is Ted Victor. I live at 8471 Southwest Fifth Street in the infamous committee, community of Heron Pond. I'm here to be recorded on the record to state that I do not want to be homeless. The Heron Pond community has been on the news recently. Folks are losing their homes, not because they were not responsible with their obligations financially, but because somewhere in the middle between the city and homeowners association, there's some finger pointing going on. The exterior shell of our buildings have deteriorated over the years, and as a result, our buildings are being deemed as unsafe, and we are being ordered to evacuate in short time frames. Now, as a son of a doctor, I believe in preventive medicine. We do not want a replay of Surfside. I get it. Moving is not the problem. However, how we move, when we move, is of great concern. I know most of you directly or indirectly, I'm a teacher, my wife is a nurse. We cannot afford a mortgage, an association fee, and another apartment to rent at a high This is disgusting. It's unfair and it's wrong. The associations appear to have some sort of a laissez-faire, hocus-pocus business structure for them to do whatever they want, and I'm asking you, city elected officials who have access to the decision-makers, to have more teeth on people, the people who police the association. I want to profoundly thank all of you who were able to respond to me in a moment of panic. Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Castillo, my wonderful opponent, Tom Good. I didn't have any expectations, but he was a gentleman and listened to me and cried to see my wife cry yesterday. I need you guys to fix this because you will see more of this. It is unconscionable that we have people who are losing their homes when they've done everything that they were supposed to do to keep the roof over their heads. Any basic psychology book will tell you, a basic need of a human being, other than food and water, is shelter. Food and water is shelter. So again, I thank you for your time, particularly State Representative Marie Woodson, who was able to listen and said she would call you to make sure that we are being addressed. I thank you for the temporary band-aid of a few days in a hotel. However, that's not a solution. These associations need to be policed so that we do not end up where we are right now because I promise you, it is not just Heron Pond. It's not enough for the city to say, "We told them to fix..." It's not enough for the city to say, we told them to fix this. It's not enough for the association to say, well, we're trying to apply for a permit. We cannot be where we are right now. Thank you for your time.
Let me just say that homeowners should be aware of their homeowners association and what they do. I've always said, when a homeowner's association is not doing what they should be doing, residents ought to go there, either vote no ones in or hold them responsible. I don't know, we could legally, City Attorney, what can we do legally about this?
Whether it's the city level?
Hold on, I'm gonna ask the City Attorney. Hold on. I heard you. City Attorney?
Just as a matter of record, uh, Mayor and Commission, there's a lot of discussion about this item. I will tell you that the city's chief billing official and the city's fire marshal, two people under Florida law that have the sovereign power of the state to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens, both on this side of the dais and on that side of the dais, and they, based upon my review of what's happened in the past number of weeks and months, have exercised their independent prerogative without interference from the mayor and commission, without the interference of the city administration, and have performed their duties in accordance with their assigned tasks. The other operational side of things and the other policy-driven issues are issues I cannot respond to. I can tell you from a legal perspective that the city has performed its functions legally for those two individuals who are licensed and certified and are required by law to fulfill the state's sovereign power, which they have without interference.
We hear you, Mr. Victor.
Respectfully, I, I appreciate your response. However, again, respectfully, it's not enough. It's not enough. I also would like to say a special thank you to Mr. Stam, who also, um, allowed me to vent. Not that it's going to solve anything, and I do believe you, I do believe all of you, that you have done what you were supposed to do. However, we are still where we are. It's not enough.
Mayor? We're gonna look at it. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you. Um, my friend Ted. There are, there are, there are a lot of people. There are a lot of people in this position. Over the last, um, few weeks, I reached out to county officials. I've asked, uh, Red Cross. Um, I've, I've suggested exploring, uh, temporary housing through, um, mobile homes and to set them up in CB Spence Park in order to not displace too many people away from Pembroke Pines. Um, our fire marshal and our chief building official, um, have, have done what they can, and I do know this, Ted, this is a long-term issue. When I received those photos from our, from our fire chief back in January, and I told you this, I want to put on the record, I knew then where the conversation was going to be now. And so, at this point, um, same measure, um, the one thing that I, that I appreciate is the, is the chief building official and the fire marshal advising us what buildings were going to be next, and I was able to afford, um, Ted, that, that information.
Yes, you did, and I appreciate it very much.
In, in order to give a heads up because it's important that you share that information with your neighbors as well.
Absolutely.
But at this point, at this point, it's about, um, it's about respecting the, not only just the quality of life, but ensuring that we don't lose any, don't have any residents displaced from our city because they have places that they have to work, they have bills to pay. At this point, um, uh, we're trying to find some, at least, I, I'm, I'm doing, just throwing things out there to see what can be done.
We're gonna do everything we can from the city to make sure.
And so I don't know, City Attorney, if FEMA can be involved in this.
Once again, your responses are appreciated, but these are after fact Band-Aids, after the fact Band-Aid. I'm asking for the policing beforehand so we do not get here.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get to it. We promise you.
Because it's a travesty, and I'm sure Heron Pond is not the only place. Again, Commissioner Good, thank you. Commissioner Castillo, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, all of you on the dais, thank you so very much. Mr. Stam, thank you. Um.
Okay.
It, it's hard to look at my wife's face when she's crying every night over this. I'm just letting you know. We follow the rules. We follow the rules, and we should not have to live like this. Thank you very much.
All right. Items at the request of the public, City Clerk?
Mayor, before we go to that?
And what are you?
Uh, items at the request of the public. Can I?
Well, I'm getting, I gotta find out if there's any. Uh, City Clerk?
No other items.
Uh, now, Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, I, I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it. Just a couple of reminders that I, that I wanted to share with everybody. Um, we're having our 11th, uh, in the, in the series, the 11th in the series of Raising Positive Children. I want everybody to put that out on their calendar, please, October 12th at 6:30. It'll be in the Great Hall again, uh, here. Um, and the title this time is Communication with Your Child and Some Take Home Techniques for Good Communication. Um, also, I want to remind everybody that this is coming Monday, September 11th at 8:30, uh, right across the way here at our, our Veterans Memorial Park is our 9/11 ceremony, which is always, um, beautiful and moving at the same time. Um, and one thing that, um, we, we are promoting a lot, and I see Ms. Sorenson here as well, is, um, we are having, for the Pembroke Pines Charter School Foundation, a fundraiser on Octo, Saturday, October 21st, 7:30 PM, City Center, and it's a, a very nice event that everyone should want to come to. Uh, it is Chris McDonald with his Memories of Elvis. We're gonna have a whole, a whole evening celebration, um, for the good of the school. So, um, notices are going out about that and think, information about that's being put out. So, um, we hope to see all of you there supporting, um, a great, great, having fun at a great event and then supporting, um, a, a good, a good thing with our, with our charter school system.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Commissioner Castillo?
Mayor, we have some people here who, uh, who came and who asked, uh, because they have childcare issues, if we could do the addendum item, which is non-controversial, it's about, uh, resolution being sent to Miami-Dade County opposing the incinerator. This will only take a second, if you'll allow me to get it out of the way.
What are you, is that?
Mr. Mayor?
It's an addendum.
Addendum one on page 15 of the revised agenda, Mayor.
Without objection, we can go to that.
Thank you very much. So this is an item that I brought. This is discussion and possible action to send officials in Miami-Dade County a resolution in opposition to creating an incinerator at or near the county line near Miramar and US 27, and to encourage them to find ways to dispose of trash that ecologically friendly and do not involve incineration. Mayor, I want to thank you for sending a letter to Miami-Dade County. Mayor Messon and Miramar did the same. He was also present, uh, at the, um, uh, meeting that they had today. His commission is doing a resolution. We should do no less. Tomorrow, I'm having breakfast with the mayor of Southwest Ranches and encouraging them to do, uh, both. Uh, today, at the, uh, Miami-Dade County Commission meeting, uh, the issue was brought up, and they basically punted on the issue, which meant that it was deferred. So they have yet to come to a conclusion. I think it's important, in addition to the mayor's letter, that we be on record with Miami-Dade County and that we send it out with quick, quick action. Uh, the City Attorney already has all of the data, uh, and all of the, uh, language that came out of our discussions and the town hall meetings and et cetera, and what I would like to do is delegate, and, and also the mayor's letter, and I would like to delegate him to, uh, Sam, how do you call it when it's a resolution that, that goes out right away?
Mayor, respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Uh, in, 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 um, limited format, it's called a draft and adopt. If there's immediacy or in exigent circumstance, this commission has had a history of directing the preparation, uh, with the, with the general consensus, uh, within the item, and then having by motion directing us to draft it and then essentially running with it without taking it back to the commission.
So I, so I would move to draft and adopt, uh, a resolution and to ask the City Attorney to send it with, uh, with all due speed to Miami-Dade County in conformance with, uh, what I read, that it, that we oppose the creation of an incinerator at or near the county line near Miramar or US 27, and that we encourage them to find ways to dispose of trash that ecologically friendly and do not involve incineration.
City Attorney, isn't that what my letter said, that we sent?
Mayor, without, uh, plead of ignorance, I've not seen the letter, but to the extent that there was a letter from you on behalf of the commission, this would, this would, this would.
That was exactly what it was.
This would be the, the policy decision-making of the commission. You choose to uphold to that.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I, I just wanted to add a little bit to that. I know that, um, I've spoken to folks, um, have spoken to Southwest Ranches. They are definitely on board and have written their own, I think they have their own ordinance, I think, that they passed already about that. Davy, Miramar, and Weston as well that I've spoken to, and they're all jumping on saying they don't, they want to be participating in the no incinerator. However, as a group with numbers, they want to, um, do their own, but they want us all to know that they are together in this stance against an incinerator. So, um, I, I, the thing is, I, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that those that have or will have control over that are listening, are listening to the, to the folks and really listening to the residents. I'm, I'm a bit fearful of that, um, that that, that that's, you know, a task. It's gonna be a task for sure. Um, the one thing though, Mayor, if I, if I may, that seemed pretty, um, pretty clear to me about a way to actually stop, actually stop the incinerator from, from coming in would be to reduce that 75% participation to where it doesn't make sense for them to have an incinerator, or they can't get approval for an incinerator if they don't have. So I would suggest perhaps that conversations need to happen between these surrounding communities that share our dislike and disdain for even talking about an incinerator, that get together and say, let's figure out a way to take care of a percentage of garbage that it reduces that 75%. And guess what? Once that happens, there is no incinerator. It doesn't happen. So there are a lot of ways, you know, my grandmother used to say, a lot of ways to skin a cat. This may be a way to skin that cat is to get enough participation from the surrounding communities that have already said, hell no, no incinerator. But we need to work together and figure out some way that we reduce that, um, that tonnage and that 75% because that is a dead shot to stop the incinerator. So I would, I would ask, um, uh, City Manager, City Attorney, if perhaps that's something that you all could look into a little bit more and bring something back to us because I think it's, uh, it's a viable, it's a viable avenue to look at for sure, for sure. Thank you.
We had people at the meeting today opposing the incinerator. Uh, we had people down at the meeting. Commissioner Schwartz, quickly, we're gonna move on.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, uh, for writing the letter. I, a few weeks ago, I had a, um, a member of Mayor LaCava's staff, and I had a conversation about the improper, um, place, let alone the suggestion of incineration. So, um, those conversations have been, um, it wasn't a one-time conversation, it's an ongoing conversation. Now, Miami-Dade, Dan Punt today, they voted for a study. And so, for a study, uh, there, there are, there are, uh, elected officials who need more information down in Dade County. So, what we do know is that a 40-year technology is not the way to go. What we know is, uh, to the Vice Mayor's point, uh, that the county, um, and the working group, uh, information was brought forward to us, uh, through memorandum, that there were steps taken for incineration. Now, look, I've, I've said for, for a while now that it's, it's just not, it's not the smart thing to do. Miami-Dade County, Broward County, Palm Beach County, the entire state of Florida needs to come up with a comprehensive regional solution. There's 3 million people in Miami-Dade County. Now, if that means five pounds of trash per person per day, just in Dade County, there's an issue there. So we also know that, based on testimony from two, three weeks ago, when the last meeting was, that Miami-Dade County is already shipping, uh, trash to the incinerator in Broward County. So it's already being disposed of here already. So, look, I believe that Mayor LaCava, uh, was pressed, I can't speak for her, was pressed on what, how, how they going to fix it. Um, based on their form of government, there's, I believe there's 13 commissioners down there, and it was a seven to six just on just raising trash rates because they didn't want to pay for the transportation to bring it to Broward County. Um, Mayor, I think that, uh, that your letter is, uh, is appropriate. I do know that this issue in Dade County is going to take a significant period of time. So, uh,
We're, uh, we're the second largest city in the county, and we're saying no. We're saying no to the incinerator. So we're gonna, we're gonna be there. You know, we can't always say what people are gonna do, but 171,000 people, no. So, and we thank you all.
Mayor, I'd like to just move my, uh, my item to draft and, uh, adopt, uh, the resolution.
Without objection?
No, Mayor, if you will. For the record, there needs to be a motion to draft and adopt.
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
A friendly amendment, Mayor, to, to.
Go ahead, quickly.
To include your letter, uh, in the reso, please.
All right.
We don't, letters aren't included in resolutions. They've already received the letter. Let's, let's just focus on what the motion is. The, the motion is a resolution.
Is that not a friendly motion, and I'll make it?
City Attorney?
What's the question, Mayor?
I'm, I'm asking if the mayor's letter be included in your draft and adopt.
If it be the wish of the maker of the motion or the commission as a whole to add it as an exhibit?
Include the letter again.
Yeah, definitely.
By all means.
All right. Call and roll, City Clerk.
And Mayor, for the record, and Commission, this is a draft and adopt resolution as proposed by Commissioner Castillo, um, which would include the conditions and terms as provided for in the agenda item addendum number one. It'll be assigned to Clerk a resolution number and will be prepared promptly and delivered promptly.
Okay, thank you.
And needs to get signed promptly.
Call and roll, City Clerk?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Commissioner Otis, report?
There's none, Mayor.
All right. How about the appeals of the Board of Adjustment?
There's none, Mayor.
Announcing the board and committee appointments?
None, Mayor.
We have the consent agenda, item 1 through 9. What is your pleasure? Any polls?
Mr. Mayor, if, uh, you say 1 through 9, is, uh, 2 included in that?
What's that?
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm okay, no poll.
1, 1, 1, 1 through 9, right, City Attorney? City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, what's the question, please?
1 through 9.
For the record, the, the revised agenda, which is published today, uh, is 1 through 9, and you'll note in the items that there's a, item number 2 has been shifted from consent into the regular agenda.
That's the answer we need. Call and roll, please.
On the consent agenda, Mayor.
I got it. Call and roll.
We need a, we need a maker.
So move.
I thought we, I thought I had a motion.
So move.
All right, Commissioner Castillo, there's a second. I'll second and go ahead, City Clerk, call and roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now on item 10, City Attorney.
Item 10, for the record, is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2023-03 on second and final reading, and for the record, it is an ordinance of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 155 of the Land Development Code of the city Pembroke Pines by amending section 155.401 entitled Zoning Map to amend the city zoning district map to rezone an approximate 5.2 acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of southwest 184th Avenue, as more particularly described in exhibit A from a B3, that's a general business district, to an R-DH, TH residential townhouse, with the allocation of 54, that's 5 for flexibility units, providing for codification, providing for confidence, providing for separability, finally, providing for effective date. Item number 10 on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you need a motion? No motion? I, I, motion by Commissioner Castillo. Is it a second? A second motion? Okay, uh, any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Mayor, if you can, Mayor, Mayor, I have to stop you, forgive me, please, but this is a public hearing and does require a public hearing. Members of the public who came out to object or support the item have a right to be heard, including the applicant, by the way.
Let me hear who they are. Hold on, Dennis. Items to the public?
Scott Barnett.
Mr. Barnett, 3 minutes, and you have his name and telephone number, or dress, dress. I'm getting one.
Scott Barnett, 19346, Southwest Fifth Street. Um, here we are again. This is another townhome project. Um, I live in Estancia, which is right next to this project. Um, I want to commend in the past Commissioner Seifel and Commissioner Castillo for standing with us on the street with signs that said no to townhomes. So I appreciate your support of that. Um, and I hope that- Um, and I hope that we can prevent these townhomes from being built because this is a commercial property. The owner has a right to, you know, ask for a zoning change, but here we go again with, uh, with, with another change. You know, there, there was a question the last time about representation of the people in Estancia. One of our board members was here. He was presenting himself at the direction of the community. Um, I talked with our president after that meeting, and our, the president told me that, uh, he didn't have that authorization at that time. Um, that was a concern for me. Um, I noticed that, uh, in the attachments there, there's a letter there now that, uh, that shows, uh, that Representative Algo Lenaga. But what's interesting about the letter is, it mentions, I, Algo Lenaga was, am authorized as a director to come and represent the people of Estancia, but it's signed by our president, George Miraboll. That, you know, something's very wrong there. I don't know, that letter seems inauthentic. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that smell about this. I'm sorry that I have to use that term, but if you look in the strategic plan that these ladies presented earlier, uh, in the meeting, on page 61, they already have Skyrise Townhomes as part of that development plan. And that's something, I believe that development plan was, is something that's going to be voted on later on tonight. Was there something that I missed? Because I thought the zoning change has to happen first before any townhomes could even be considered. It doesn't make any sense for me. Plus, at the end of the agenda, I saw there was another addendum item that, interestingly, there's a municipal land dedication from Skyrise Apartments, basically $300,000 being presented to the city of Pembroke Pines for what, I don't know, usually land dedications or memorials for important things, I would think. But it's, this, there's something that just doesn't smell right about this. And when we talked about earlier about strategic plans for the city, mixed-use developments on commercial land, if you're going to plot home townhomes, you're getting rid of this commercial piece of land that could be one of those more relevant mixed-use plans that can be used in a better commercial way. It's commercial property.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Barnett?
Well, you, 6 minutes. No, that's fine. That, that's it. I, and the other thing is the joint access agreement for traffic. There is no joint access agreement from the adjoining properties, so it's about health and safety, isn't it?
Next speaker, City Attorney, City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Should I leave the mic on or...
Sure.
Susan Snyder.
Need your name and address for the record, and you have 3 minutes.
He's taller than I am. Susan Snyder, 730 Southwest 191st Avenue, Pembroke Pines. Good evening.
Good evening, go ahead.
I try to find balance, understand perspectives, and put issues into context so good decisions can be made. That's what I do. Two, uh, tonight are 2 issues that are both important in their own right, but more important when they inform one another. There's a request, this request for rezoning and then approving building of 54 townhomes, one right after the other. We know the players, pros and cons. The traffic issues, the very careful preparation of attorneys and property owners, the comings and goings of representatives for neighborhood properties, and the discussion around low-income housing, which it is not, but which would give the city dollars towards some, maybe. It's not a good idea. The elegant solution to build a road within communities will not alleviate the traffic issues that have continued to intensify because the city has not yet, yet addressed the concerns related to Pines Boulevard. In my humble opinion, my recommendation is that you vote no. Then there's the issue of waste reduction and incineration facilities. We know some of the facts. Miami-Dade, 3 possible sites, Broward County, 27 and Sheridan, carcinogens, polluting groundwater, smell, noise, drugs, and so on. I encourage you to be proactive in the ways that we've started to here today for Pembroke Pines, but also for our neighbors. I also encourage you to be extremely proactive around recycling, recomposting, I won't go through all of those because I have limited amount of time. Let's get our businesses, residences, decision-makers, and other partners, um, parties together to make the necessary changes now. How did these 2 affect one another? This is not the time for more overbuilding. If you allow 54 more townhomes by saying that you agree to rezoning, you allow additional waste to go into an already overtaxed system, you allow more groundwater to be degraded. We can't handle what we've got. There are decisions that need to be made. Say no to more building until the systems can handle them and, and serve the residents. And by the way, they can't now. These arguments were made 50 years ago, 20 years ago, and here we are today. Thank goodness we have such smart and conscientious individuals on the commission. Be the change we need. Be smart, forward-thinking, and creative in doing something amazing. Just stop for a time and get things straightened out. Craft a path forward before you agree to rezon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Further? City Clerk?
Laura Franzek.
How many more speakers do we have?
1.
Your last one?
There's none more.
You know, what I said is your name, address, and you have 3 minutes.
Yes, good evening, Laura Franzek, 19159, Southwest 8th Street in Pembroke Pines. Some of my friends have already come forward with a lot of really good arguments, so I'm not going to restate the same thing. But what I did want to bring up in response to this particular proposal is, we're not here to debate the use of the property. It's a commercial piece of property. I think there were some really good comments made by the other 2 ladies who were here with potential for ongoing use of commercial property to help advance the city and to help it to continue to grow. What I am questioning and asking for this group's support of is, this was purchased as it was zoned as a commercial piece of land. Why do we need to make a change? When this land was purchased, it was clearly known that it was commercially zoned. That was the intended use for the property. Any question to rezon this just so that we can slam in another group of overpriced because they are not going to be affordable townhomes? We've seen that already with Merritt Square. Cramming in 50 more plus overpriced townhomes in a very small piece of land on something that's already been designated commercial doesn't make a lot of sense unless you're just looking at the financial aspect. So instead of wasting time on all of the wonderful PowerPoints and the presentations about how beautiful this is and will be and the nirvana that will hum, come to all the residents who are in the area once this is built, I'm again asking that we just keep this simple and focused. The land was purchased with its current zoning clearly stated. The buyer entered into a contract to purchase the land with this zoning. Now, with increasing housing prices and the need for housing for residents who want to become part of this great city, it's understandable that we're looking for new opportunities for building. However, the buyers knew what they were purchasing when they purchased that property. Now that they want to change the zoning, it very clearly looks like a request to just make additional money. Take the money out of the equation, I doubt we would be having this conversation here today. As a leader in the community of Friends of the Pines and active on social media, I've received over 3,000 comments and feedback components from all of our neighbors and constituents in the area. They're tired of this. They're tired of not getting heard. They're tired of asking for help. They think when Commissioner Cyple, Commissioner Castillo had come out, as Scott mentioned earlier, in support of not doing this rezoning, they want to be heard. I'm asking that you hear them tonight. This was purchased in good faith with an understanding of the zoning. Just because it's an opportunity to make more money should not be a reason for you to come in here and ask for the zoning to be changed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mealy? No, I, we're done.
No, we have 1 more, Mayor.
I thought you said that was it.
No, 1.
Okay. Who's the next speaker?
Tenet Farica.
Mr. Mealy? Yep, you turned it off.
I thought I needed a green light, it was a red light, sorry. Uh, Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. Item 2 is a municipal land dedication agreement, which is actually a, an agreement to pay money in lieu of dedicating land, because if we dedicated land, it would be such a small piece, it wouldn't be usable. And, uh, obviously, the city makes that decision. Do you want land or money? So it's a standard agreement, we do it with every plat. That's number 2. Number 10 is the rezoning, number 13 is the plat. I came here this evening to do, ask for 1 thing, to ask you to defer, advertise, and put the items back on the agenda. We've done significant amount of work since you last saw us. Uh, we did enter into an agreement with Tuscan Pines, we have their support. We also have the support of Estancia, notwithstanding what the first speaker said. Um, we were asked for letters from the associations, and we got them. We also went to DOT, and DOT approved the new left turn lane. But it's obvious that I still have more work to do, so I would ask you to defer it, re-advertise, and have us come back. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move to the deferral.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by the way, for your discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mealy, you're deferring all 3 items, 2, 10, and 13, is that correct?
All 3.
All 3.
Okay, City Clerk, call and roll, please.
Mayor, if I may, could we intervene? That's to a time...
City Clerk, City Attorney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission, that's to a time uncertain. There's no time certain being asked for.
Okay, that's what it is. It is what it is.
We understand it would have to be re-advertised.
Okay, just for the record, because there are costs and expenses which the city will not bear.
We understand we have to pay for the advertising.
Thank you, Counselor.
City Clerk?
Thank you, Counselor.
Vice Mayor Cyple?
Uh, yes.
On the deferral, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Ron, thank you all, appreciate it. Ron, item 11, City Clerk, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Item number 11 is next up on the agenda, which is a motion to pass on proposed ordinance number 2023-06 on first reading. It is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 50 of the city's code of ordinance entitled Water and Sewer Regulations, amending section 50.40 entitled Cross Connection Control Program, granting City Utilities Director discretion to assume responsibility of certain maintenance requirements related to required backflow prevention assemblies, and to pass along the cost of such responsibility to certain customers. Modifying requirements for certain customers to create and maintain records to black, backflow prevention assemblies, authorizing Utilities Director to require additional testing and inspections, deleting requirements that such inspections be certified and administered by certain individuals, amending requirements for certain customers to provide notice and records of testing, deleting provisions requiring backflow administration fees, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 11, 2023-06, on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
So move, move by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor, second.
Mayor.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead, quickly.
Mr. Dodge, could I, could we have Mr. Bailey, please?
Mike Bailey, Utilities Director?
Yes, you are. You're doing a hell of a job, and I want to thank you and your staff for everything that you do. You sent me an email because I asked you a simple question, which was, what is this again? And I had to tell you that I read the email, and it was very well-written, and I still am kind of fuzzy. Give it to me like I'm a 3rd grader, what is this?
Um, so currently, our ordinance requires the owners of these backflow-prevented devices to test them annually in accordance with state regulations. They're not doing it.
These are backflow devices where?
Uh, downstream of the water meter. It's to prevent any water that went past the water meter and into the structure to come back into the water distribution.
Got it.
So...
So it's between the meter and the house?
Uh, well, it's not, it, these aren't, uh, residential, this is commercial.
Okay, so it's between the meter and the resident, and the commercial?
Commercial structure, yeah.
Okay. And what is it that you want to test?
The, the actual valve itself, the backflow prevention valve, has to be tested annually by, in accordance with state regulations. The problem is, folks aren't doing it.
Okay.
So, um...
Whose responsibility is it now?
It's the owner's responsibility to ha, to do the testing. It is the water purveyor's responsibility to make sure it gets done.
But they're not doing it.
But they're not doing it.
Has this been causing a problem?
Excuse me. Commissioner, I know you, can we get, can we have him finish his statement, please?
Well, he...
Please, go ahead, finish his statement.
Okay, so, um, these devices need to be tested annually. Historically, we've gotten about 15% compliance.
Hmm.
Uh, at any point, the state can say, you're in violation, you're not getting this done. What I have done in my past to resolve this is to allow the city to take on that responsibility. We get a contractor to do the testing. It's typically much cheaper than if the, uh, owner went off on their own. And so usually, the owners are happy because it's being taken care of, it's a nuisance that they don't want to think about. And we're happy because it's actually getting done, we'll have essentially 100% compliance, and we won't have to worry about being...
And then we bill them.
And we bill them, correct.
And they're happy.
They're happier with what we bill them than what they would have to pay on their own, typically.
Okay, so, 'cause, 'cause I don't want to pass this, then start getting a, a million emails saying, what the hell are you doing? This is my responsibility. Who the hell are you to be in between my, my meter and my, and my building?
If, if folks want to do it, no problem, they can do it.
Okay. But then if they don't do it, what happens?
We do it for them.
No, no, what, what, what actually happens if, if, if your backflow meter doesn't work?
Um, if it doesn't work, it will allow water to get back into the distribution system, the city's distribution system.
We don't want that.
No, it's violation of state regulations.
Okay. Vice Commissioner Schwartz?
Got it. Thank you, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Bailey, thank you. Um, so the check valves, can we tie this into, uh, LBTR or Fire and Marshal inspections? Whereas if we don't complete the, uh, if the, if the check valve has not been evaluated within the state regulation, that we could, uh, that it could be an occupancy issue for that business? I mean, what you're, what you're asking for is for us to do it. Mr. Bailey, uh, the city, it does a lot at, well, and there's things that we don't do so much. Um, we've, um, we've had history of, um, contractors in the past not fulfilling their contractual obligations that have put us in a really bad position. So, uh, I'm not questioning the intent, I'm questioning the level of execution of this. So my question is, how do we ensure 110% compliance if we are taking that responsibility?
Yeah.
Versus, versus picking up the phone and asking the state to do their job and ensure that the building owner is doing their part?
Really?
Typically, the way it is now, our recourse would be to shut off the water.
Yeah.
Usually, that would get compliance. Historically, we've kind of been reticent to do that. Uh, that's before my time. But what I'm, what I'm, um, what I've done before in my past life that has worked is is to implement this ordinance change, allow the city to do it. We hire a contractor. They get paid for everyone that they do, so they're very happy to do them. And we get the compliance we need, and the vast majority of businesses are very happy for us to do this because it costs them less.
Is, are there any administrative costs that we absorb for this process, managing the process, versus the contractor being just a pass-through? If it's twenty bucks or a hundred bucks, whatever it is, how does, how does the financials work for the city, making sure that we're, that our, our costs from the staff, Tommy perspective, is captured?
So we pay an administrative fee to the contractor of like five hundred dollars. They make their money on the testing. They don't make much on the five hundred dollars, but they take over the management. It's almost like we hand that to them, and they take care of it for us.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Bailey.
Edit.
I, I know that when I was sort of reading through this, I wanted to make sure it's, it's commercial.
Correct.
Condo?
Hmm, if it's a testable device, yes.
Condos would be included in this?
If they, if they have testable devices, I believe, yes.
Don't they all have the backflow stuff?
Well, and, and single-family residents also have backflows, but they're dual-check valves. They're not the same. You can't test those.
Right, okay. And what this is asking for is that it's granting the City Utilities Director you discretion to assume that responsibility. So you either can take it on and do it yourself and make sure that it gets done, or you can wait for them to, some that do, and you said you only have fifteen percent compliance, so eighty-five percent aren't, aren't doing it.
Correct.
But, but if you then don't follow up to make sure that it gets done, you can get a slap on the hand, can't you?
Yes, I can just, excuse me, yes, I can the same way as I can if we're only getting fifteen percent compliance. My intent with this is that, I'm, the only reason that we want to have, excuse me, pardon, discretion is that if we have a business that says, I will take care of this on my own, then I said, I will have the discretion to say, okay, you want to do it, go ahead, but we're going to make sure you do it. And if you don't do it in X amount of time, we're going to go in and do it for you.
Or they have a history of not doing it, and then you can kind of step in on it.
In the vast majority of cases, that's not going to happen.
But it, but in each, but the point I'm trying to make is that in either case, whether you actually perform this yourself or whether you let them, but, but if they don't, and you don't follow up, is what I read in here, if you don't follow up and make sure that it gets done, then you're liable as, as well, correct?
Correct, and the contractor who we hire is going to say, okay, I did all these.
Yeah.
There's twenty left that aren't done yet. We'll make contact with those twenty. If they don't get it done within thirty days, we're going to send the contractor out. They're going to do it.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Good information. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, I got one question, please, so.
Quickly, you know-
Yeah, Vice Mayor actually struck a good chord there about the condos for a minute. So I know that you said that the, a business, but the condos are not necessarily businesses. And some of the condos we have have like multiple buildings that may be able to get bulk pricing for that type of service. So how do they go about doing that in terms of saying, no, we're okay, we want to do it ourselves? And, and does this ordinance specifically allow the exception for them to not be serviced by the city?
Well, as mentioned before, it gives the, me, the Utilities Director, the discretion. We're, the contractor will send notices to, to every, every owner of a device that needs to get tested. It will give them instruction on how to respond if they don't want us to do that for them. So then they can contact the contractor and say, no, we're, we're going to take care of it ourselves. Please don't do it. And the contractor will say, okay, fine, and then they'll let me know. And within, let's say, thirty days, the contractor will confirm whether or not they've got it done because they have to submit us, they have to submit a report to us, a test report. If we don't get the test report, I'm going to have the contractor call them and say, you didn't get, you didn't follow up on your end. We're going to come test it.
Okay, so, so then if they are not wanting the city to perform the service, then they have to submit their reports of the results to the contractor you hired, correct?
Correct.
Is there going to be a cost for them to submit that report to that contractor? Or is there a cost to the city to do that? Because now the city, now the contractor is incurring an activity that's not being compensated. So how does that work out?
There, there's no charge for that. They submit, if they submit a test report, contractor enters that in their database, and we're done.
Okay. I know it's a good lift, a heavy lift, and I know the responsibility that you have there, so I, I know how challenging it is. So I guess we'll work through this a little bit more.
Good information. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good information. City clerk, call the vote, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seible?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Audit?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Director, Mayor and Commissioner, item has not been set for second and final hearing, but it will be at some future moment once advertising is conducted.
Thank you, sir. Item twelve, if you know what.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item number twelve is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty, thirty, twenty twenty-three dash twelve on first reading. It is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter fifty of the city's code of ordinances entitled Water and Sewer Regulations, by specifically amending section fifty point ten of the city code, entitled City Commission Approval for Connection to a City Utility, establishing a policy that the city will not provide water or sewer services to any property outside of the city's municipal boundaries when the city commission has determined that the proposed use of such property is noxious, offensive, contrary to the best interests of the city, and adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, city's residents. Providing for separability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, finally, providing for an effective date. Item number twelve on the floor.
Thank you, city attorney. Is the motion by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Eddie.
I will second it for discussion.
Commissioner Good for discussion. Okay?
Yes.
Welcome for discussion.
Yes. Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo.
I wish we had done this a couple of decades ago. We would have saved a lot of trouble with a neighbor, and this makes total sense. I want to thank the city attorney for his comprehensive opinion. He stands behind this language one hundred percent. Our city is a provider of water and sewer, but we are not a public utility. We exist to provide water and sewer services to our own residents. And then occasionally, if it makes sense, to people outside of our municipal borders, when it makes sense, by contract. And I think that that's exactly the way it should be. And if we had had this language ten years ago, you know, but you live and you learn. And who knows what comes, what comes forward from here? But the city attorney thinks this is legal. I know that it's good public policy. The public wants it. And I think that the city gets better once we get five yes votes on this. So thank you.
I'm for a discussion. City clerk, call the vote.
No, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to make some comments here about this.
You gotta, you gotta let me know, Commissioner. Give him a chance.
Okay.
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 Looking for your line.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I, I'm not opposed to the intent of this item here. I don't know that I am in agreement with how open-ended it is. Seems to be very subjective. I, I would like that maybe we can ask for this ordinance to be a little bit more tweaked in terms of adding some definitions that would, you know, what is noxious, offensive, contrary to the best interests of the city? That's, to me, is just really wide open. I, I, I think the intent is to ensure that certainly the health, safety, and welfare of the city is protected. But I'm, I can't go with this really open-ended language in there unless maybe it's either defined or, or we do something else with it.
Mayor, can I respond to that?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Mayor, can I respond?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Good, that there's, there's a lack of definition. City Attorney, I have a series of questions I would like to ask you. The first one be, can this ordinance bind a future commission?
May I respond, Mayor? The answer is that this is an ordinance which is adopted by the Mayor and Commissioner as a public measure. It's an item on the books. It's in the, it's in the code book, and it is, it binds future commissions. It is, it is a legislative piece of the city of Pembroke Pines.
It, it binds a future commission to consider all water applications?
The ordinance as written would essentially be amendable or modifiable by the commission if it so chose. It would apply based upon its terms to the applicant who would come before the commission for water service or sewer service.
City Attorney, what commission? This commission or a future commission?
Any commission in the future, so long as the ordinance is on the books as a legislative item of the city of Pembroke Pines in the code book in a codified ordinance.
The judicial system weighed in on this a little while ago, didn't they?
Well, they, they weighed in on it in the Allen's Creek case, which is referred to in our memorandum back in nineteen seventy-six, which is this Florida Supreme Court case, which was referred to in the fourth district case where the city was engaged in litigation with, with an entity called CCA, and that's also referred to in the memorandum.
And the, the memorandum certainly is helpful. This, outside of the definitions, this may tighten up a bootstrap.
Where are you going with this? What's your point?
Mayor, I, you know what? How about I just leave?
Well, if you want to, but I'm just-
I mean-
I'm asking you for a point. So simple as that.
Well, I have the floor.
Just going on now. I want a neat point.
Okay.
Please, I'm not being nasty, just need a point.
Mayor, I, I, I have been extremely patient tonight.
Okay.
I've been extremely patient.
Good.
Okay, I have a series of questions for the city attorney, so we can actually legislate. Now, if, if there's, if there's a pending matter that, that requires us to adjourn early, just let us know.
No.
Okay.
Just telling you to re-brief if you can. Okay, Commissioner Castillo, are you done?
I would like to continue. So city attorney?
Please, break if you can.
Uh, city attorney?
Yes, sir.
The, the purpose of this ordinance is to get it passed before October the first. Is that correct?
There was, if I may respond, Mayor, there was discussion during the commission meeting at which the request was made of our office to prepare a legal, to prepare legal research and a memorandum with regard to the subject matter, and to adopt an ordinance or to prepare an ordinance for consideration and adoption by the commission consistent with that memorandum, which we have done at the request of the Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, so under, in the backup three, the city has not established a service area for the provision of city water and sewer utilities outside of its municipal boundaries?
This ordinance does not create a service area.
This ordinance does not. That doesn't mean that a future commission can't do that.
The answer is that a, a future commission could modify the ordinance and modify the current code and could provide a service area if the commission at that time chose to do so by ordinance.
If the county, Broward County, were to go to the water management district and say it is in the best interest for public safety and welfare that they need a large water use permit to dig a hole in the ground of maybe a proposed incinerator site, does this ordinance fix that?
If the county, on county-owned property-
On county-owned property, yes.
County-owned property, not, not a, not a private user.
Correct.
On county-owned property in the city or outside the city?
If it's county-owned property, would it matter, sir?
Well, the answer is, is that, that, that in the city, the city has an established service area within the municipal boundaries of the city of Pembroke Pines. This would have to be outside the city, I, I assume, for discussion, which would be an area where the city has not established a service area.
And would that service area, would, would that be a manifested intent of, of prior connections? Meaning that, let's say we had a contract with the county, and then we no longer have a contract with the county at the time of this reading. Is there any manifested intent?
I'm just the city attorney, but at the end of the day, if there's a challenge to the decision of this commission to adopt this ordinance into in a future moment, on an application that's properly pending before the commission deny it, then the applicant who has denied that access under the terms of our code of ordinance, the city's code, certainly has the absolute right to go to court and challenge that decision. Whether there's been a manifestation of intent, which is the language used both in the Allen's Creek case and in the CCA case, that's, that's fact, depending, depending what happens at the time of the application.
So how do we fix the concerns of definitions for second reading? How, how do we get there?
We, several things. We believe that what's before the commission is certainly legally enforceable and constitutional subject to a challenge in, in, in a circuit court in, in this community, in this county. However, if it be the wish of the commission's legislators to try to offer up some additional thoughts for us, which we could do between first and second reading, we would certainly take, take the direction of the commission to do so. We have used as, as best we can those terms and issues that were articulated during the public meeting at which we were directed, and also look at some other terms and conditions, knowing full well that the health, safety, and welfare is a fiduciary obligation of this commission, whether this ordinance is passed or not. It's, it's part of what you do, part of who you are.
Okay, so just to move this along there.
Okay.
The, the word noxious. I, tell me, did I not see what noxious was defined in memorandum? It, it, can you cite other legislative bodies that may have defined it through legislative action versus Webster's dictionary?
Well, noxious is not exactly the same as obnoxious, but noxious, for the purposes of this discussion this evening, is intended to say that there, there are case decisions where the word noxious is not an uncommonly-used word. It has a plain meaning, as they say in Webster's dictionary, but it is something which is offensive or such, so egregious that it causes the sensitivity of the, of the recipient of the problem to have a particular reaction. You are the five members of the community which have, would have to react to that in some fashion, depending upon an application, which is yet to come before you. But you would have that discretion, and that's, that's what it, that's what it does.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I, I was a little confused when I, when I read this because, and I'm going to ask city attorney, don't we already have this in, in the intent of this in process that should an outside-of-the-boundaries entity want to come to us for water? There's a process. They come and they make application, and the commission, it's my understanding, reviews the application and speaks to staff or whatever they need to do, and then it comes to us through a vote. So don't we already have this ability to agree to or not agree to?
Thank you. Respond, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance actually amends the existing code of ordinances. There is an ordinance currently in place that references the, the process to which you just referred.
There, there already is, there already is an ordinance with a process of how it happens. This is amending it by putting in some of this other language, which is not, not defined, not really defined, and I think could be problematic by virtue of the fact that it's not really defined. It becomes so very, you know, subjective, some of the, some of the words that are used in here. I would have liked to have seen perhaps, I don't think we need it because I think we already have it. But if it wanted to be tightened up, then there should have been some more complete language and more definition, a more defining of what it is, so that there aren't those challenges out there. If we have the option early on to set this up to help prevent challenge, you know, challenges, then, then we should do that. And I know this, and I know, and I, and I'm assuming that, that this item is really kind of wrapped around this whole incinerator issue. But the reality of that is, if the county decides that they're going to go with an incinerator, they don't need us. They don't need our water. They'll dig a well. They'll put in a septic tank, put a couple of bathrooms, and they're good, they're good to go. So as I said earlier, the fact of, of just, of just saying, you can't do this, isn't, isn't it? What I said earlier was that there are so many surrounding communities that have voiced their opinions, and, and the residents and the leaders, the elected leaders have voiced opinions, have written notices about this, that they are totally in opposition to an incinerator coming anywhere near any area. So I say again, while, while this, I understand the intent of this item. We already have this item on here. We already have the ability for this item to do what it's doing. We need to be concentrating our efforts into working together as, and I hate to use the word like a co-op, and I don't mean that because that has a lot of other crazy connotations to it, but as a group with, with our other surrounding cities to take away that volume of trash, which again, seventy-five percent, if they don't make that seventy-five percent, that's a dead shot against the incinerator, and we'll stop it in its tracks. So our efforts need, yes, it will. Our efforts need to go in that direction of getting more, more folks that are really saying that they want to be involved, involved, residents and communities as well, and, and figure out a better, a better way, and it's clearly not this. Thank you.
Commissioner Castillo, is there ever going to vote?
Yes. So in terms of the language, the language was provided by the city attorney and by Bruce Johnson, who knows this issue ten times better than anyone sitting here. And this was the language that they recommended. They don't find it vague, and they find it legally sufficient. If we have better suggestions, we should come up with the suggestions. But let, let's be clear about this. Uh, Sam, a question, a, a, a notion was raised that all, that all of the things that are in here now, we could, we could have done that before. In other words, when CCA came to this podium and asked us for a, an application, did we have the authority to say, you know what? We don't like what you do for a living. We think it'll be bad for the city. We think it'll be noxious. We're denying you. Did we have that authority?
There is, if I may respond, Mayor, there are a considerable series of facts and circumstances revolving around that application, and which, by the way, the city commission never approved or denied, as you know.
Correct. So what this does is strengthen our hand against a threat, and the clock is ticking- So what this does is strengthen our hand against a threat, and the clock is ticking because if this isn't the law in Pembroke Pines by O- October first, we can never do it again. And I ca, and I gotta tell you, if this results in a, in a, in an incinerator out there, there are people on this stage who will never be forgiven.
Okay.
This hurts, I'm not finished.
Okay.
This hurts.
Quick, please.
Nobody to do this here. All this does is strengthen the position of our city, and an incinerator uses many, many thousands of gallons of water an hour. It's a huge user. So if, so if anybody thinks that they're going to put in a couple of porta-potties and dig a well, they're going to need lots and lots of water. So, because incinerators don't work any other way. So I, I, I need folks to pay attention to what it is that we're, we're, we're talking about here. A yes vote puts us in a better position to do battle if, if the time comes to do battle. If you want to throw out and go into this thing relatively less armed, I did my best, folks.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a comment as well, too, please.
Quickly, is there ever going to vote?
I'd like to ask a question of the utilities director.
Mr. Bailey.
Mike Bailey, utilities director. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I just, a, a quick question is, um, how difficult is it to set up a, uh, uh, I mean, with the technology that's available today, to set up a package plant for water production? How difficult is that?
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
You're having trouble.
I'm asking, uh, the utilities director, how difficult is it to set up, um, a package plant for water production?
Um, without knowing the details of obtaining a consumptive use permit or water supply in that location, I don't know about that part, but technically speaking, uh, building a package plant to treat water, produce water, is just a matter of money. It's not technically difficult.
And today's technology can be done pretty affordably. Would you agree to that or no?
I, I don't want to speculate on that. I, I'm, I'm sure it's not billions, but I, I don't know what it costs.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to say a couple of things on this then. Um, I, I think what I'm trying to get to with the questions, I'm certain that a package plant or even some sort of one-skip nanofiltration process, which is certainly the way that we're going today in how we produce our water, can be easily put out there. And it, you know, you're right, there's no need to use our water. But there are other situations that I can actually see this, um, playing out. Um, and I do understand that, uh, and, and matter of fact, one of those situations would be sort of like we just recently, not recently, but in our past, we've dealt with Bang. Bang came and asked for a million gallons from us. And that million gallons was going to eat up every bit of capacity, which meant that there would be no more water for the city of Pembroke Pines. So why would you want to do that? So I wouldn't want to be subject to a right that somebody thinks they might have, if there's an opportunity to strengthen the law or protect us in terms of, uh, you know, passing an ordinance that could protect us from some other type of circumstances. But again, I cannot go with this just generic anything we goes type of thing. I'd just like for maybe we, you know, incorporate maybe some definitions or... Well, I would like, I, I can tell you that I've had conversations with the attorney already and I have asked some additional questions of staff. I've gotten through, uh, a point where I can make a recommendation at this point. Uh, so I mean, for me, if this could be deferred, where we can get a, um, language incorporated that makes it a little bit more specific, uh, in regards to protecting us, but not being, um, just subjective.
I'm happy to defer your item. The item is.
Commissioner Castillo.
Why do you have to?
Well, because I didn't recognize you, number one.
Okay, so relax.
No, you relax.
Okay.
We're even on the side of an hour.
I was gonna ask if, if, I was responding to my colleague, if we could defer it, I'm fine with deferring it to come up with better language, but we have to get it done before, before, uh, October first. So if that means a special meeting, that's what it means. So I'm okay with it. If you guys want to defer it and, and give your suggestions to Sam, I, I'll even chip in and give, and give some suggestions.
Okay.
But this has got to come in for a landing before October first, or we just took a self-inflicted hardship. So I'll make a motion to defer time certain.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm, I'm changing the motion. It's my motion. Okay, I'm amending, no, I'm not amending the motion. I'm making a new motion.
Then you have a second.
And, and, and the, Mayor, I'm making a motion to defer this item for time certain to the next meeting, understanding that we may have to have a special meeting after that. And I'm asking you, my colleagues, if you have better language, use that time to get it in there. Otherwise, this is all we got.
All right, is there a second to defer?
So I'll second that.
Second to defer. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if I may quickly.
Go ahead.
A deferral to a, to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Would be a second first reading.
That's correct.
Second reading.
So we may have to have a special meeting to do the second time.
If I may, Mayor.
You're absolutely right.
Mayor, if I may, and to the commissioner who is attempting to frame this motion, if the deferral to the next meeting would create a second first reading, the intention would be to make certain that a second and final reading would accommodate a, um, uh, not bumping up against Senate Bill 170, which is effective on, on October 1st.
That's why I said it has to happen before October 1st.
I'm just raising it because.
So if you guys have better suggestions.
Mr. Mayor.
You have, you have, you have the next two weeks to hand it in.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We have a meeting on the thirteenth. If we could get this done and have a first reading as a special meeting after the fire assessment meeting, then you can have a second meeting.
Works for me.
On the second.
Let's see if we get it done by the thirteenth.
Well, I don't know, but it would have to require some pre-advertising.
Mr. Mayor, I can, pardon the challenge, and, and, and Jacob Horowitz and I just were conferring briefly. I don't have in front of me what the advertising space and time would be to get to the second and final reading. You may run, you may run the clock down unintentionally.
The other thing we can do, the other thing we can do is pass it now.
Commissioner, can we listen to the attorney, please? City Attorney, finish your statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my intention only expressed the fact that, that, that your good faith intentions as a collegial body to defer it would hopefully not run afoul of the fact that I can't predict what the advertising requirements would be, and I, I don't have an answer about that. I know that you would probably cure that, and I'm not trying to, I'm not voting with you or for you, I'm just giving you the best legal answer. If you pass on first reading, you would get past that bar.
Correct.
All right, everybody understands?
So one thing we could do is pass it on first reading tonight, and then, and then make, make, make all those suggestions and it'll be available for us at the second reading.
All right. City Clerk? City Clerk?
We're, so which would you all defer?
City Clerk, call a roll for a motion.
Excuse me, which would you, which motion would you prefer?
We have a motion on the floor.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor?
City Attorney?
Would you stop interrupting the business of the city?
City Attorney, do we have a motion to defer?
Excuse me.
No.
I'm asking the commission.
I'm asking the Attorney for a question about procedure.
You are, you are, you are overstepping your bounds.
We have a motion to defer that was made by Commissioner Castillo.
Excuse me. I wish to ask the commission a question.
No, I'm talking to the city attorney.
I wish to ask the commission a question.
I'll recognize it. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor.
Would you answer my question?
The answer to the que, the question is whether or not the, uh, what's before the commission for a vote, what's before the collegial body at the moment is a deferral to the next meeting.
Okay.
I said.
I am asking the question, would you all prefer to have a special meeting, or would you prefer to pass this language, submit your changes, and then deal with it next time? One, un, under, under, dealing with, with the original motion, we don't need a special meeting. If we defer, we do need a special meeting. Which of the two would my colleagues prefer?
All right.
Motion to defer.
Okay, the motion to defer.
There's a motion to defer on the floor. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mayor, we have, uh, someone from the public that he wants to speak on this item.
Okay.
Kenneth Farikas.
You're, you're speaking on the deferral, sir?
Yeah, I'm going to speak, yes, in time of the essence.
Sir?
Yes, we, in time of the essence, Mayor.
Okay.
We keep pushing this thing down the road.
Mr. Farkas, push the on button.
My name is Kenneth Farkas. I live at fifty-three thirty-one Southwest one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. And the reason I'm speaking on something to be deferred is we don't have the time to waste on this. We keep pushing these things back to the last minute and having these special meetings, and we're really not accomplishing anything. I take great compliments to the board for taking the initiative in last week's vote to not participate in the ILA, and especially commend the city manager for his work in finding an alternative plan, as well as the recycle plan he plans to deliver in the next few months to once again allow us to recycle. But you have to keep in mind, these votes mean nothing. They mean nothing. Because just like this item on the agenda and item number fifteen, because the minute the SWWG turns into a taxing authority, you will no longer have, they will have a mind of its own, they will have, all the other cities will be deferring to them because they are now the trash czar for the city of Broward County. And so once they pass that seventy-five threshold that Commissioner Cyphal keeps referring to, they get to have a life of their own. Now, the question I have for this group, because you all are participants in this, is this is all being set up by the Broward League of Cities, this group of city leaders that all get together and, and do this stuff. So I went on their website. Congratulations, uh, Attorney Goran, because their president awards was named after you in two thousand seventeen. Our mayor was the president of this organization way back in two thousand and five, and Vice Mayor Cyphal is currently on the board of directors. I guess my question is this, they've never had this kind of authority in the history. They've never created a taxing authority, at least they, nothing they mentioned on their website. The only thing they mentioned is giving away awards and giving away scholarships. They have never, ever had this ability. The only thing they've ever undertaken is a task force in two thousand and eighteen with recommendations on school violence, but not the authority to implement any of them. And now all of a sudden, this city and every other city, well, no, not, not because we set up this city, it's not going to, but twenty-nine cities are giving them authority to decide our trash future. Rather than make these silly letters, which are hypocritical because you all sat on the board and were there when the incinerator was being discussed constantly, when they were putting out press releases talking about the incinerator, when they were going before the Broward Commission in March of this year, telling them about the incinerator, you all sat silent. So I don't want to talk about fiduciary stuff. Right now, you can turn around while Dade County's got everybody hot and bothered and get Miramar and Weston to back out of this, and they lose their seventy-five percent. Or we can get Commissioner Good to get Deerfield Beach to drop out of it, where he serves as a, a director in the city, and once he gives you a lower threshold.
Mr. Mayor.
To the seventy-five percent.
He is, uh, passing false information because I know, I, I've been there for over two years. Two years, sir.
Okay, I, 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 I was told you.
Your information is so totally bogus, you need to stop.
And Mr. Farkas, let me just tell you something.
Well, that was told to me by Michael Stan at the last meeting, and you went back to Deerfield Beach, because I know you went to work for Cooper City in twenty-twenty-two.
Let me just tell you, the letters we write from this commission to those places like the county are not just paper. They mean something from a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
And you are in an incinerator and a board that's discussing incinerator, two miles up the block, how soon are they taking you? Seriously, you've been in meetings for four years discussing this.
All right, I'm, City Clerk, call a roll for a deferral, please. Trying to get it back to order.
Commissioner Castillo?
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
No.
Vice Mayor Cyphal?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Item fourteen, City Attorney.
Mayor, can we, uh, set a special meeting date now that, uh, we're up against a clock?
Well, he knows we have that one.
Well, here.
You gotta check everybody's schedule.
Well, if, if I may, the, the thirteenth, we have a five forty-five hard, uh, meeting for the fire assessment. Yes?
City Manager?
City Manager.
Yes, what I suggested was the seventh, uh, the thirteenth, you do have a meeting already set. If you wanted to do a special meeting that night, if you can get all your recommendations and you can have first reading.
So, so not knowing how long that's going to take, I have a commitment, um, at six-thirty on the thirteenth that I cannot get out of. So basically, our fire assessment fee, this is the reason why I voted against a deferral. Now, if, since four, you are in the majority, I think it would be best practice to go ahead and pass it tonight so that we can see it on the sixteenth with the changes.
You're asking for a night that we're going to have a special meeting?
Well.
This vote has been taken.
I understand. I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking for a reconsideration. Okay, because I think it would be good policy to just pass on first reading and see what the city, uh, attorney comes up with to eliminate the suspicion.
City Manager?
If, if you pass it on first reading this evening, you can follow your schedule, have the second and final reading on the twentieth, which is the regular meeting. And there would be no need to call a special meeting.
All right. So on item fourteen, City Attorney.
Wait, are we going to defer?
We did. We deferred. The item is deferred.
Thank you, Mayor.
We still have a vote.
Okay, Mayor, item fourteen. May I begin now?
Clerk? I mean, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fourteen is next up on the agenda, which is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-three R thirty-five, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, requesting the Broward delegation of the Florida Legislature to prioritize and to draft a bill to be considered during the twenty-twenty-four legislative session, addressing the removal by utility operators of obsolete or out-of-service utility hardware and other infrastructure, providing for a transmittal, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and finally, providing for effective date. Item fourteen on the floor for consideration. Fourteen.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by the Vice Mayor. This is an excellent item, and we do have that stroke with the Florida Legislature and the Florida League of Cities.
Yeah, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I want to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Commissioner Good's work with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and call a roll, City Clerk?
Commissioner Short?
I, I don't think I moved the item, City Clerk.
It's Commissioner Castillo.
No, it's Castillo.
Yes.
And the Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Short?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now on item sixteen, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item sixteen is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-three R thirty-seven, which is a resolution of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the city Pembroke Pines Economic Development Strategic Plan update, a copy of which is attached or to exhibit A and made a part here of and incorporated by reference, directing the appropriate city officials to take any, all, all action necessary to effect where the intent of the resolution, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item sixteen on the floor.
Is there a motion? Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good. Discussion? Sir, three minutes.
Scott Barnett, one nine two four six, up with Fifth Street. Just a quick note, um, I'm concerned of, if this passes, it lists Skyrise, the Skyrise Development as townhomes. I don't know if that somehow gives, you know, credibility to that development as a townhome development because it's written into that agenda.
It's a good question. City Manager?
That's a city, that's a city attorney question.
City Attorney.
I'll be happy to take that volley. The answer is that it does not bind the city to anything. It is simply a projection of items and matters. The city commission has taken no legal position of any kind, sort, or description approving that project.
Is this a recommendation by the city, this plan?
It, it, it is a, it is an amorphic plan that's yet to be finalized.
So in a sense, it could be.
I don't want to debate you, sir. I appreciate your comment. I'm just giving the.
I understand. No, but.
I understand your concern, but I'm.
Yeah, so this is a recommendation, and part of that recommendation is for townhomes by Skyrise Department.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that, uh, we strike that language from this document because I understand what you're saying, and I believe that we should probably strike it because we are adopting something that has not been yet.
And I like the idea of a townhome.
City, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Can we legally strike that action?
The answer is if you, by motion, you would, uh, request your, um, advisor or consultant to strike that from the document, the answer is yes.
I motioned it already.
All right, all right. We have a motion. We have a second. Call a roll, please. On the furl of the item, on the furl of the language.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, if you will, the, the, the item sixteen before the commission is the actual plan, is the proposed plan. So what, what, if the motion embraces a request, better said, a direction to the consultant to delete any reference to Skyrise townhouses or townhomes within that plan would be, would be removed.
Okay, so.
And if they can listen and they can understand, they can understand they've been, they've been directed to do so.
The item we're going to vote on is what then?
Can we get? Can we get the director up here so he doesn't have us bringing it back again?
I'm getting ready to make a deferral to give staff an opportunity to do a rewrite, if necessary.
Mr.?
I like that better.
Before we start chopping things up, I'm sure there's other things in there that are.
Commissioner, please.
Mike Stan, City Manager, there's a variety of projects in here that are in various stages of development. The section where Skyrise is referenced says it's going through the various development processes. Again, the project could be removed. If the project gets denied, when we go to the rezoning, it's, it's not saying that it's approved, it's, these are, it lists various types of projects that are being considered at this time, or in development. It's a series of projects, it's not an endorsement, it's just a series of types of projects that are being considered at this moment in time.
Mr. Mayor, he brings up a very good point. I think that this document should be deferred, and every one of these projects that are in progress should be stating in progress, not yet approved.
Okay, is there a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
Second by the Vice Mayor, discussion? Call a roll, please. Mr. Stan, would you have anything?
Well, it, it, it states that already. It says that they're in various stages of development, they're not approved.
Okay, we bring it back, we just have to, go ahead, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, the regular agenda, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As you'll note, item number two has been pulled by the applicant from the record, includes number 10, number 13, and number two have been pulled and removed at the request of the applicant's counsel. And before the commission now, you have the regular agenda beginning with reports of league representatives, et cetera.
Okay. Reports of the league, there's a luncheon tomorrow, they're going to be introducing the Broward School Board Superintendent to all of the tenants there, and it's in Cooper City. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, I have one item. We did receive a request from Ms. Polly Wilkie regarding the Prestige Club to do something similar as we did last year, is a cosponsorship of the event and the purchase of a table for this event.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, discussion? Call a roll, please.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank God she's still around.
Mayor, I have one.
Commissioner, City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Your item.
I've enjoyed the opportunity, Mayor, but I'm going to defer, I have no further items.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
I, I, I just wanted to make sure that.
Mike? Mike, Mike?
Item 12, that we, our vote was to defer to the next meeting as a first reading, correct?
The City Attorney, was that the line?
No, Mayor, Commissioner, if you will.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
It was, it was deferred for a second first reading.
A second, I mean, it's a second first reading.
Second, so there would have to be in some form or fashion a full public hearing on the second reading, presuming advertising requirements are complied with.
Correct, thank you.
All right, thank you all, great meeting, appreciate it, have a great night.
How about we do 17?
You what?
How about we do item 17?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that, you're right, Commissioner, go ahead.
Okay, the City Attorney.
Mayor, I have a disclosure to make before we begin this item. In discussion with the City Attorney, points out that this is something I should be abstaining from. It is yet another item during a, an election season that targets me, and so, good night, I wish everyone well, and I'll see you next time.
Thank you.